Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the work session on... I'm looking for the name on this item. There it is, ACU 23-074 and FD-23-012. So, we are, I think we're ready to go. Jill, would you like to start off with?
I do, but I'm gonna have to borrow somebody's mic.
Here, take mine.
Give you a little more extension here. Be easier to change seats.
Maybe. Okay, good afternoon. Can everybody hear me just fine? Okay. So today, we're reviewing a presentation for administrative conditional use, 23-07-074, FP 23-012. The proposal is the Winter Lake Phase III project. The applicants are here to provide a presentation. And the next step is for the board to decide whether this is going to move forward in a public hearing or whether it's going to go as a planning director's decision. And so, that's really what we're discussing today. This gives everybody an opportunity to ask questions about the project and the merits of the criteria that we're addressing. But this will give you a better understanding. So in future, if you want to make comments on the merits of that project, you'll have a better understanding of what the criteria is plus what the project entails. So are there any questions?
Can you speak up a little louder?
Yeah, you can talk into the echo. A little more vertical.
The echo is your owl, because we didn't build a system for that. So it's picking up what's coming out of the speakers.
Maybe you just get closer.
Not coming out of the speaker.
It's really not coming out of the owl speaker.
No, it's the owl picking up the audio from the room and then transmitting that back through the meeting. That's what he's saying.
Okay. I don't know how to pick it up. If I turn the owl off, nobody online will be able to hear you.
If you put the microphone a little closer to your mouth, maybe that'll help.
I don't think that that really... I think I have to scoot further away from the equipment, is what I'm being told. So were there any questions about what the meeting is actually about today?
Do you have a flyer that we could follow and then look at things later on?
I can print you the staff report, but I don't know that we actually have a flyer for the presentation. So if you want PowerPoint slides afterwards, as long as you see any issue with me handing those out, okay.
We can certainly make some PowerPoint available and I expect you can put it on here on the site with the rest of the information.
Right. So Jill, we are recording this meeting, so please try to keep comments and cell phones and all that stuff turned off. We're recording, my work is on the website, so if you want somebody else to go look at it or you want to review it later, it's there. And all materials are also on the website. So we will move forward with the presentation unless you have anything else.
You can keep that, good night.
I had a question, man.
Oh, sorry.
You know, I'm trying to teach myself. I've been reading the Constitution and stuff, and I don't remember seeing anything about work sessions or consensus-based decision-making. I went all over the National Policy Consensus Center, which is where all this overreach comes from.
So work sessions...
And I don't see any of the language that I see in the Constitution. I don't see any language that provides for public input. All I see is an aggregate of different stakeholders and NGOs.
Call down.
An aggregate event making highly impactful decisions.
I think we'll let legal terms...
And I'm gonna point out its stark contrast to our role book.
Okay, it's noted for record, thank you. And I don't know if this... Do you want to raise your hand for this? Chair?
If anybody wants to learn more about the consensus process.
Okay, but this is all...
The overreach comes from it, and you're on very solid ground. As a matter of fact, the National Policy Consensus Center in Portland, these traders made it a government agency. And you pay them to come up with crap that people don't want.
I can't even learn. I want to do the public process of history.
So I'm gonna teach you, brother. I'm gonna teach you how your constitutional regulations are being violated.
Thank you for those comments duly noted. All right. So we have some testimony from the proponents of the project.
No, this is just a work session to review the project. Then you're gonna take comment after it. So we need the presentation first.
Well, that's what I meant. Different works.
Okay, gotcha. I'm with you.
I just would want to really clarify here that this precedes the land use decision-making process. This is a decision of whether to call the matter up to the Board of Commissioners to review the application and go through the plan use process as the board, as opposed to having a planning director or planning commission do that. So just wanted to be really clear that we draw a line there. Any information provided today, it's just background information. It's so people are familiar with the project and if they have questions, they can ask them, but no part of the decision-making process is commencing here today.
Information only. All right. Who would like to go first? I'm sorry, I wasn't opening that to the room. I was opening that actually to the panel here. You will have an opportunity for public comment later in the meeting. Thank you very much.
Chairman Taylor and Commissioners, my name is Fred Messerly. I'm the district manager of Beaver Slough Drainage District. Our family is a... Messerly and Sons is a landowner and an applicant. And I've got over 55 years of experience in resource management and working in with the type of resources that are within the Beaver Slough Drainage District. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to come in and make a presentation here, to give background information and explain the project and what our application is about. Today, we will give an overview of the project, a bit of its history, and then we'll have presentations by some of our other stakeholders. I want to clarify right at the beginning here that the prime applicant in this application, not only to the Planning Commission but also for the Cora Ford Joint Permit Application, is the Drainage District. This was at the bequest of the... or behest of the permitting agencies. They wanted to deal with one agency as the representative and then everybody else, of course, is appropriately included. The Coos Soil and Water Conservation District, they are the district's agent and have done the bulk of the preparation of the project as well as the permit applications and that sort of thing. And they have been assisted by Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Through their technical assistance, support role, they have assisted in the preparation of the project design as well as the permit application. Besides myself today, we'll have landowners Mark Eisenhardt and Jeff Messerly presenting some biological aspects of the project. Mike Gray from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and Helena Bette Linnell from the Kokeel Indian Tribe. Stuart Love, the Kokeel Valley Wildlife Area Manager, will present, as will our project facilitator, Kaylee Sowers, from the Soil and Water Conservation District. And Julie Huff from the Kokeel Watershed will present some of the monitoring and project results. And from a stakeholder perspective, virtually, Steve Denny will present some of his thoughts and comments. So now can we go? Where are we there with?
It's leading into work.
I want to go to probably page five if we can.
You said five?
Yeah. Yeah. Now, does this work? Okay. First thing I'd like to address here is the Beaver Slough Drainage District role. Our responsibility is to manage and maintain the district infrastructure. We administrate our district water management plan. And our mission is to facilitate and coordinate with our landowners and other stakeholders to make sure that everybody is able to meet their objectives on their individual parcels without interfering with other landowners in the district. Next slide. The focus point here and the focus of this application is to provide the necessary infrastructure to allow us to manage and move water on the landscape. Next slide, please. We're looking at being able to implement the working lands concept here to where we're able to move water, which is what the Drainage District is about, to be able to move water around and to be able to maintain that infrastructure and improve it to where we can move water in the most efficient manner for the benefit of all of our landowners and stakeholders. I'd make the comment that this application, this discussion today, is not about the Department of Fish and Wildlife and Bridges Foundation acquisition project. It's not about the Koleto Drainage District tide gate replacement and fish passage project. And other than the significant reduction in mosquito habitat that would result in this project, this isn't about a regional discussion about mosquitoes. Next slide, please. Okay, we can look at this 1848, 1948, and 2048. We can't go back to 1948. A lot has happened since 1948. And really, our approach to what we're doing in the Drainage District and what our landowners want is where we can be so we are all working together in 2048. In 1848, when Oregon was organized as a territory, Section 12 of the territorial constitution declared that rivers and streams supporting salmon shall not be dammed or otherwise obstructed unless fish passage is provided. Now, that has carried on to this day for a period of time and in various places. That was not observed a whole lot, but since the mid-'90s and the Oregon Salmon Plan and that finally in the early 2000s resulted in Oregon administrative rules concerning fish passage and continues on to this day. And so, everything that we do within the district has to pass muster with the fish passage rules, and it drives a whole bunch of what goes on with the permitting process and what we have to do. Additionally, we have had the development in the last 50 years of the land use and zoning laws and everything. And we feel that this proposal that we've got, this project that we've applied to have permission to go forward with, we feel that it well meets all of the proper criteria for the zoning ordinance. Next slide, please. Okay, as you can see here, the area, and it's hard because it's far away, but the Kokeel River Vestuary Management Plan is basically the area from the river out to the edge of the color. And then from there on up to the left and upward is the project area. As you can see, the impact on the Kokeel River Vestuary Management Plan area is very minimal of what this project, any work that would be done there and its impact there. And that, anything in that area needs to apply for an administrative conditional use per the zoning plan. Anything outside of that area is an exclusive farm use zone, and all of the operations, all of the activities that we're asking to do is a permitted use in that area. The only thing that is required there is notification to the Department of State Lands and notification to SHPO. And because of our joint permit application, that has already been done. So any, given the process and the hoops that we've had to go through and the permitting process and everything that's in place, any denial of this project could be construed as basically a further assault on private property rights for ranchers, farmers, and landowners. Next slide, please. And there's an economic component to this. These properties, this area has a significant impact on our local economy. You know, you go back in time and the savior of the decade, whether it be a steel plant on a north bed or methane gas or a container terminal or whatever it may be, the base of this county and the stable base has been our ag and timber and fishing resources that have been here paying taxes, supporting the community, buying groceries, buying fuel and other supplies. And denial of this project will have an impact on that because we won't have the productivity that we need to be able to produce the benefits of this land. Additionally, these agricultural operations, the grazing operations in the Winter Lake area, we can't generate enough income to comply with fish passing. So it's been necessary to work together with all the stakeholders and come up with ways that we can work together to bring the resources together that will allow us to continue our ag operations as well as provide the benefits for habitat that are necessary. Next slide, please. So, back in 2008, our Drainage District culverts and tide gates were approaching end of life. And as we worked our way through figuring out how we could meet the fish passage requirements, we developed the China Camp Restoration Plan, and that included new tide gates, infrastructure improvements. And at that time, the work that we're proposing to do now, we wanted like the devil to permit that all in one deal. The problem we had was is that permitting agencies said it would take five years plus to do that, and our tide gates, our old tide gates, didn't have enough life there. So we had to back off and basically say, we'll have to do that later. And that was seven years ago in 2016, I think, that we decided we just better get the tide gates done and then we could work with the rest of it. Next slide.
Help me here a little bit. On that previous picture, all those little, I'll screw up color names, but those purple circles, are those all existing tide gates that you're talking about getting replaced?
Those are existing... Those were existing culverts at the time. We'll have a better slide later to show the replacements and the channelization plan.
So those represent things that didn't get done in the original phase?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And you can see there, moving into the next slide, in the center there, that lighter area is Unit 2. Essentially, stay back there for a second. Essentially, what we did was we divided the district into three units. Unit 1 is on the bottom to the left, Unit 2 in the middle, Unit 3 on the right, rather. Unit 3 on the left in the upper part. Unit 1 and 3 were basically ag-related, and Unit 2 was developed for a part of the Kokeel Valley Wildlife Area, more of a conservation and pool use area. Okay, now we can go to the next slide.
That purple is Project 3, correct? All that purple?
No. Oh, you've got me on colorblind, sir.
If Unit 2, it should be done on the project log there and...
Yeah, I'm gonna... I'll address that here. So the pinkish, purplish colored part in the middle, that's Unit 2.
Yes, sir.
Unit 1 is to the right and below it. You can see it kind of outlined with the blue lines with the red dots, and then Unit 3 is to the left of it.
Okay, so that is... Is that towards...
The one on the left would be over more toward North Bank Lane, that road you see over on the left, angling from the top down to the left, that's North Bank Lane.
All right. Okay, let's go to the next slide, please. Okay, so in 2017, we were able to build the tide gate structure. Additionally, we added access roads, access bridges, and rebuilt the North Dyke, which was part of that project. And then, next slide, please.
What kind of tide gate is that?
That's a concrete box. That's a concrete box culvert structure with seven gates in it. Excellent, okay. And then, Unit 2 in 2018, which was permitted, was channelized and part of the restoration efforts were completed in 2018. And then, we have been working since 2018 to get to prevent, to do Phase 3, which is the infrastructure improvement in units 1 and 3. And I need to clarify, there's 95 acres across Beaver Slough in the Koleto Drainage District that is included in this application because it was included in the total permit as a facility to make these improvements more easy to work with for the permitting agencies. Next slide, please. Okay, time and tides basically wait for no man or woman, for that matter. And we need to realize that where this is located in the valley, we don't have... Everything is dependent on tides. It's above brackish water, it's all freshwater, but we are affected by the tides, we are affected by the river flow, and so we're really restricted in the amount of time that we've got to be able to manage water and to be able to affect our water levels and whatever. And so you can see here in this slide, the fact that we've got low tides, but we really don't get a lot done except on minus tides. And that's where we can drain water, that's where, on the other side of that, is when we can let water back in. So it's very dependent on the river levels and the tide levels. Next slide, please. So, a tide gate basically is a gate that's gonna close on a rising tide and prohibit water from coming back in on the inside, right of field level. When the tide goes down, the gate will open and let the water that is accumulated on the inside out. Between our low tide and our field level, we've only got about two and a half feet of preport, if you will, to work with. And so, it's very important that we have the capacity to be able to move in our system, our infrastructure can move water when we have those opportunities to move water. Now, the muted tidal regulator concept is that we manage that tide gate so that it will let water in to a set point on the inside so that it doesn't close immediately when the incoming tide starts. And this does two things, which is very important to meeting the fish passage regulation, and that is, is that it lets us keep the gate open longer, thus more fish passing on incoming tide. And because you've got a higher water level on the inside, it opens earlier, creating more fish passage time on the way out. And that's a critical thing with regard to meeting the fish passage regulation. Now, if we can go to the next slide, please. Here's kind of a concept drawing of what we're trying to do on the inside. Right now, all of our Unit 1 and Unit 3, they haven't had any maintenance for at least 20 years. They're basically bogged up and undersized. And so what we're trying to do here is, in the design of this, is to come back where we can get this back on grade, get the capacity in there so that we've got a place to put that water, so that we can move more water back and forth and accrue the benefits to all of our stakeholders of being able to move that water back and forth. We need that capacity within our system to be able to manage water. Let's go to the next slide, please. Okay. Permits, engineering, et cetera. Permits, engineering, et cetera. We're dealing with 11 different agencies to permit a project like this. The 404 Joint Application Permit goes to the Corps of Engineers and DSL, and then it filters out from there. That application has to have a land use compatibility statement from the planning department, and then we also have to come back to the planning department for a flood impact approval. The nuts and bolts of this project are in the ABC attachments to the joint permit application. We have put a tremendous amount of effort into explaining this project, the technical part of it, and we're not going to go into that today, but that is available on the project application website at the planning department. And to really have an understanding of this project, one needs to study those attachments to the joint permit application. In short, what we're looking to do here is basically mimic natural conditions. Before there were tide gates or any of the man-made alterations to the district or to the area, nature basically sized everything appropriately. The tide came in, the tide went out. Occasionally, something would lock it up or whatever, and nature would work itself around it. Then man decided that we were going to do a better job, and so we designed a project here that was basically designed for, by committee for 100 years, and so not everything really fit. But what we're trying to do with our design on this, and you need to understand that this is all engineered design. It used to be that you could kind of just wing it, but now the permitting process basically requires an engineer stamp, and what we're really trying to do is, as much as possible, mimic what nature was doing, bringing water onto the landscape and taking it off to fit the needs of our stakeholders. We need to manage that a little differently at different times of the year, but the basic principle here is we want to create nature as much as we can there, and of course, everybody benefits by eliminating ponding and enhancing our water quality. If we can go to the next one. This is kind of a natural swale concept, or natural swale, and our channelization efforts are basically to be able to create channels that mimic those natural swales and allow us to move that water on and off the landscape. That has advantages for drainage, advantages for irrigation, and habitat advantages, advantages, particularly in the winter time, to be able to provide access and cover for fish and areas that they can get to. Next slide, please. And here's a more modernized swale that's got water in it, but note that this is set up, so when the tide goes out, it drains out, and when the tide comes in, so every tide, you're exchanging water there. Next slide, please. Here you go, John. This is kind of an overview of the proposal, kind of shows where the project proposal, where this application is going to do work within the area. We're essentially going to take the existing channels and try to tie them in with some of the historic channels and get it to where we can move water on and off the landscape to meet the needs of what we need to do at various times of the year. And it changes, in the summertime, it's more heavily towards the egg uses. In the wintertime, it's more towards being allowed for fish passage and fish utilization. Next slide, please. Hey, this is just a list of project activities. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here, but just to give you, you know, we're going to have to look at, we've got some dredging to do on our main canal, we've got a lot of culvert replacements, we're trying to size and manage those culverts to where we can be the most efficient with them. We've got a bridge that needs to replace one culvert, water control gates so we can manage water from different areas. In the summertime particularly, when we're wanting to irrigate, side channels, which are designed to go in and be able to drain as well as flow water in, so into the areas so that we can take advantage of those better benefits. We've got firm repairs that we need to make where we've had either washout from nutrient damage or just lack of maintenance, water, off-channel watering, and cattle crossings so we can efficiently have access and move within the different parcels. And then the dredge foils, we've got to comply with having to spread those to a minimum of three inches average. And then, where appropriate, we will incorporate vegetation into the process to prevent erosion and also provide shade for the water. Next slide. So, post-project, in the past, we've had problems with these projects and permitting and everything, whereas we didn't have any provision for maintenance, and so if you had an issue a year later, then you're right back to square one. And we've worked very hard in the permitting process to get a commitment that we can maintain this system to its design specifications for a period of time, and we're talking 20, 25 years. And to go along with it, and that's absolutely critical to what we need, because things happen, things change, and you need to be, you can't be going, I mean, the expense and effort to go through a permitting process that's already been engineered and designed, this doesn't make sense. The other thing that we have included in this, in the permitting facility, is an adaptive management provision. And that means that as vegetation grows, as things change and everything, we're able to go in and consult with stakeholders and the permitting agencies and make the adjustments to this to keep it working the way it's supposed to. And that has an advantage for the landowners and the producers in that they have some certainty. It also has an advantage for the other stakeholders and the permitting agencies in, that they don't have to be committing resources to continually being able to try to re-permit things. So, that kind of wraps up the overview on it. At this time, I'd like to invite Mark Eisenhardt and Jeff Messerly to give a little bit here about the agricultural impact. So, we have the next slide, please.
Well, our family is a landowner in this drainage district, and so this affects our place as well as Messerly's, it's border us. Jeff is more involved on a day-to-day basis than I am, and so he's kind of the brains of this duo, and I'm kind of more the looks. I don't know about that. But I think there were some other slides there coming, Fred?
Yeah.
Particularly, what we've had trouble with is the irrigation aspect, and if you were to see the shape of our place within the district, ours, the place we have is essentially the riverbank from about half of Unit 1 down to the tide gate. You would be quite surprised if you were there in August, how dry that is. And so, from our point of view, it's always been, the irrigation aspect's been probably the most important as opposed to the drainage, which might affect Messerly's or other landowners more than ours. And that's one of our great issues there, I assume. And so, there you go, trying to backflow water to irrigate in, and as well as water cattle, and that's likely something that resembles, it's on our place, and that's kind of why we need to clean the ditch and replace the culverts.
If you could just kind of cycle through these three different ones while they're talking, and find there's two more.
And that culvert we saw there is something that needs to be permitted to be replaced. And so, when you look at that, you think, "Well, that's not the ideal scenario," but perhaps it could be better, but we can't change it until we get it changed.
Well, I think my main thing is, you know, we've, I've been running cattle out there since 2004. I've obviously grown up in the area. When we cleaned the whole system out in 2004, you could see the grass, the land come back, you know, the production was really good. Now, our ditches are so plugged up, it has soured the ground. It was, most of the grass was good canary or bad grass, now we're dealing with silver leaf, buttercup. I'd say my production is probably down a third of what I'd usually grow for grass. And, you know, before you could go get three or four permits, dig your ditches, life was good. Now, it's gotten so hard, nearly impossible, to get permits in order to clean your land up, that we've had to partner with people to help us out, you know, in a project like If we can get the water off the field earlier, we get cattle on there earlier, ups our production. When the ditches are plugged, I can't turn cattle out as early, and I can't keep them out there as late. The whole, you know, we spent a tremendous amount of time and money fixing the tide gates, that was number one. Well, now we've got to fix the whole entire system to make the whole entire system work. You know, I'm not going to say either way on ODF and W and all that, but I feel like the politics of this whole thing is getting way blown out of proportion. The landowners are out there, we're trying to do it the right way, the legal way, to get our property cleaned up so we can get back in production. And I just feel like sometimes the whole area is, we're viewed as part of the problem, well, we're not. We're just landowners trying to make a living out there, trying to do it the right way.
And we can't take advantage of the effectiveness of the tide gate.
Right, exactly.
Green system like this.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
What's the last gentleman's name?
Oh, this is Jeff Messerly.
Okay, can we have the next slide, please? Okay, next, we've got Stuart Love, the Coquill Valley Wildlife Area Manager.
Sure.
Just go ahead and ask him to change over if you want.
Sheriff Taylor and Commissioners. My name's Stuart Love. As Fred said, I'm the District Wildlife Biologist with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. I'm also the manager of the Coquill Valley Wildlife Area. I'm going to talk just a little bit about some of the wildlife benefits of the Coquill Valley as a whole, and then also talk a little more about the Coquill Valley Wildlife Area specifically. The Coquill Valley, from a wildlife standpoint, is a significant feature for migratory birds. According to the Audubon Society, something like 90% of the ducks that migrate through the Pacific Flyway on the Pacific coast stop in the Coquill Valley for a kind of an energy stopover. They stop their feed, fatten back up, get their energy reserves back up to a reasonable level, and then they continue their migration on down into California. They do the same thing coming back north. They'll come out of California into the Coquill Valley and other places along the Oregon Coast, but the Coquill Valley is probably the most important, other than the Columbia River. And then they continue their migration on north. Also, we get the largest proportion of tundra swans that are in the, along the Pacific coast will spend the winter in the Coquill Valley. Other species of wildlife that use the Wildlife Area or the Coquill Valley during their migration are neotropical migrants, which are generally songbirds that migrate, some clear down into South America. They move north and south along the Pacific Flyway, and they need stopover places where they can also rest and feed up, and in some cases, they'll winter in our area. Also, we've got a healthy population of a variety of different resident wildlife, including Roosevelt elk, black-tailed deer, black bears in some cases. We've also got a variety of different fur bearers and other types of water birds, so there's really quite a diversity out there. The reason that a lot of these animals use this area is because they're needing high-quality wetlands for, to satisfy their energy needs when they're on these migrations. And so, on the Coquill Valley Wildlife Area, one of the goals that we had was to provide high-quality food for these animals and a diversity of it. We found through research that the diversity in feed, especially for waterfowl when they're migrating, is really important because any one source of feed only provides a certain, you know, proportion of their dietary needs. So, they need a diversity, and they get that from these high-quality wetlands that are available in the Coquill Valley. This Phase 3 project that we're talking about today, if it's implemented, would result in an increase in habitat quality and diversity for those types of animals. Next slide, please. Talking a little more about the Coquill Valley Wildlife Area, we provide a lot of opportunity for Oregon's public to recreate. We require those who are using the Wildlife Area to fill out a free permit. They're made available at the access point on the Wildlife Area. Person fills out the top half and sticks it in a slot, fills out the bottom half and takes it with them, that's their permit to use the area. When they're done, they put some information on there regarding their visit, why they were there, and how much time they spent there. What we've found is, we get about 600 permits a year filled out, and the number seems to be increasing as time goes on. About half of those permits are filled out during the waterfowl season, the other half comes throughout the rest of the year. While we're finding, we're certainly, the area's getting much more popular with waterfowl hunters, we're finding it's also starting to draw Oregon's public here to view wildlife or to fish or do other types of things that happens outside of the fall. This picture is a picture of some kids that are participating in one of the programs that we offer out on the Wildlife Area called the Youth Pheasant Hunt. It's where we release pheasants on the Wildlife Area. Kids check in at a check station, they're paired up with experienced hunters and dogs, and then they go out and they hunt on the Wildlife Area in a very structured manner. The area's divided into pieces so that the kids are not overlapping to increase safety and also ensure that they have some success. So, these kids are learning to handle firearms, they're learning to value wildlife, and they're learning a lot about their natural environment as a result of this. Another thing that we do is we have, annually, we have a waterfowl workshop, which is offered through our headquarters, who we have at the headquarters, and it's geared more towards hunters of all ages. We've got most of them are adults that participate. We've, we've got most of them are adults that participate in that. But it's similar to this youth, youth pheasant hunt in the, in the fact that it's designed to provide people an opportunity to learn how, how to responsibly hunt and how, and to teach them a little bit about their environment. And hopefully they come away respecting and appreciating it more. Next slide, please. So ODFW through the Coquill Valley Wildlife Area participates in the working landscapes concept. And basically what that is, is it's where land is managed for a variety of different benefits, including natural resources and, and other benefits, human benefits and wildlife benefits and fisheries in, in this case. And so on, on the Coquill Valley Wildlife Area, of the approximately three hundred acres that we have that's appropriate for, for forage removal related to agriculture, about a hundred and fifty acres are allowed, we, we allow a, a local farmer to harvest forage out there for silage and hay. In the past, we've also had some grazing out on the Wildlife Area. Presently, we're not doing too much of that, but we're, we're talking about moving back towards that for some, some portions of the Wildlife Area depending on how things go in the future. So Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife plans to continue to participate in this working landscapes concept. We, we find a lot of value in, in helping support the local agricultural economy. We also use the forage removal agreements that we have to manipulate habitat to benefit wildlife. So it's a, it's a dual benefit scenario for us. And then also, as, as you know, I'm sure the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife or any other state agency is required to pay in lieu of taxes for, on, on our, on our ownership. So the, the amount that we pay is based on the local tax rates. We're essentially paying the same, same as any other private citizen would who owns property out there. We also pay twice the fire assessment that any other private landowner might pay. And that's because of the large, relatively large amount of human traffic that we have out on the, on the property in terms of recreational use and that sort of thing. So that's, that's, that's what I've got at this point.
Thank you, Stu.
Yeah.
And next to speak to some of the biological aspects of it, Mike Gray and Helena, why now?
Thank you. Chairman Taylor and Commissioners, my name is Mike Gray. I'm a District Fish Biologist for the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife out of the local Charleston office. Stuart alluded to the wildlife resource values of the Coquill Valley. And Fred described the working landscapes approach on the Beaver Slough drainage district. For a few minutes, I'll touch on some of the biological issues related to fish in the Coquill Basin. One of the target species of restoration efforts in this area is Coho salmon. Historic estimates of the peak adult Coho salmon returns to the Coquill Basin were over four hundred thousand fish annually. Now, in a peak year, about fifty thousand fish return, but average years are more like fifteen to eighteen thousand fish. Next slide.
Oh, that's the one, that was, that was the one.
Okay.
In the Coquill watershed, Coho salmon are spawned upriver in small to moderate-sized tributaries. After hatching about this time of year, they'll spend a year in freshwater before migrating to the ocean as a smolt. The small streams in the upper basin encounter low flows in the summertime, which shrinks the habitat that's available for those fish. And many juvenile Coho will make a general down-basin movement to find suitable habitat with cold water, shade, and cover, and a generous food supply. But in the wintertime, the main river flows exhibit high velocity and turbidity and become inhospitable to juvenile salmon. These high velocities can flush them downriver before they're ready to migrate out to the system, out of the ocean, to the ocean. Turbidity can affect their ability to find food items. And high velocities cause them to expend great energy fighting the current. Next slide. At, at a critical time as winter flows begin to rise, Coho seek slower-velocity areas with abundant food to spend the time until spring when they will leave for the ocean as smolts. This slide shows the general difference in size of juvenile Coho using the off-channel, overwintering habitats such as in the Blair Lake area versus those found in the main river. This larger size and health, as they enter the ocean, can translate to greater survival to return as an adult a few years later. Through the nineteen hundreds, approximately ninety-five percent of the off-channel, overwintering habitat for Coho and other native species was disconnected from the main river or access was impaired for those fish. An historic estimate of over fourteen thousand acres of this tightly-connected habitat was reduced to about four hundred acres by the nineteen nineties. Due to a number of factors that impacted their populations, beginning in the nineteen nineties, Oregon coast Coho salmon were federally listed as threatened under the Endangered Species Act, and they remain federally listed today. Commercial and recreational fishing opportunities negatively affected by their population size and listing status. Large-scale restoration efforts will be needed across the coast to restore their habitats and move their status toward delisting. Next slide. The China Camp Creek Project in 2017, the large tide gates and the, and the berm replacement, and the Winter Lake Restoration Project in Unit Two in 2018, collectively known as the Coquill Working Lands Project, were implemented to maintain the traditional agricultural use of the land while also restoring and enhancing fish and wildlife uses on the Beaver Slough drainage district. Objectives of the projects include improved daily tidal water movement and better access for fish and connected connection to the river. The Winter Lake Phase Three Project is needed to move water more effectively in the interior lands of Unit One and Three and to improve connectivity of small interior drainages to the main canals, designed to drain lands and reduce ponding of water or stranding of fish and to allow daily flushing that will improve water quality. Next slide. For decades, large drainage canals throughout the Coquill Basin have been home to non-native warm-water fish species like largemouth bass, crappie, bluegill, and bullhead catfish. We've already seen improvement in water quality of the main canals in the Beaver Slough drainage district through increased daily flush, flushing facilitated by the new tide gate infrastructure. Next slide. Some of the native fish species that utilize the project area, area are Coho and Chinook salmon, cutthroat trout, and Pacific lamprey, all shown here in this slide. Improved water management through the Winter Lake Phase Three Project is designed to continue a trend of better wa, water quality and temperatures that will favor native cold-water fish species and disfavor the non-native warm-water species. Thank you.
Helena? Helena?
Thank you. Oh, I think in the previous slide, I think you had anything to add. So I don't have a whole lot to say other than...
You need to get a mic over to her.
Thank you, Darris.
My name is Kaylee Sowers. I'm the District Manager for the Coos Soil and Water Conservation District. So as Fred mentioned, we've been working with him. So a lot of people may have, or be familiar with Watershed Councils and the Soil and Water Conservation District. We are slightly different in our structure, but we're a very similar organization. We are grant-funded, we work with primarily agricultural landowners on a voluntary basis to do conservation projects that benefit, usually our focus is water quality, but often there are multiple benefits, fish and wildlife. Our organization's primary goals are to promote the wise use of renewable resources through education and locally-led voluntary conservation, to conserve, protect, and develop natural resources for the economic benefit of the people of Coos County, encourage measures for the protection of the waters of Coos County, and assist local landowners in the developing and utilizing of their resources to reduce soil erosion, conserve and improve water quality, maximize profit forage production, improve fisheries habitat, and support the economy of Coos County. And so this project really encompasses all of our mission statements and goals. And our my contact information is there on the slide along with the Directors of the Coos and Coquill Watershed Association, who are not directly individually involved in this project, but we all consider ourselves partners on broader...
Please silence your phones.
I thought I said that at the beginning.
I think it's my daughter.
Thank you, Kaylee. And next we have Julie Huff, the Monitoring Coordinator with the Coquill Watershed Association, to talk about some of the results we've seen.
This is just a pretty picture of a Coho salmon, actually. Always like to add as many photos as possible. My name is Julie Huff. Like Fred said, I'm Monitoring Coordinator for the Coquill Watershed Association. I have been monitoring tide gate projects, starting with the Winter Lake Project, when that was first constructed in 2018 and continued up to this day throughout, and other project sites throughout Coquill and Riverton. These projects, tide gate projects in general, really improve water quality on these sites. The, the main reason for their improvement in water quality is the sheer volume of water that is moving through those tide gates and cycling through those channels or the canals. You can see these two photos here, those are off at the, the ends of the drainage canals. And you can see the core water quality. And when you have stagnant water like this, it's more likely for there to be algal blooms and loads dissolved oxygen, which is not good for fish or livestock or any wildlife. Now I'm going to talk more about the majority of my monitoring work. And that is assessing how these tide gate projects are used by juvenile Coho salmon. And we are tracking and capturing juvenile Coho salmon at these project sites from December through May, every year for the last five years. And what we see, as you can see on this figure here, they really grow fast and become extremely healthy fish when they are in these off-channel habitats. Like Mike was saying, when fish, sorry, every time I say fish, I really mean juvenile Coho. So when juvenile Coho get out of the Coquill River into this slow-moving water, it is their prime location to grow into a healthy smolt. And the larger the juvenile Coho is when they leave to the ocean, the greater of a chance they'll return as an adult. And that is the main goal for all of these projects. And the Winter Lake Unit Two project has consistently grown the largest, healthiest fish on even forage. And this is just a few examples of the fish that we've caught. So you can see, I mean, their distended stomachs, that's how much food is out there and how shiny and large and just beautiful they look. These projects are, are really making a difference. And I just want to give a nod to the non-juvenile Coho, or the non-Coho species out there. So we are sampling, like I said, in Coquill and Riverton at five different locations. We're catching turtles, lamprey, sculpin, adult steelhead, juvenile steelhead, juvenile Coho, all sorts of native species. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of the additional benefits beyond salmon. And this slide here, lots of arrows. So these are our project sites. And what I really want you to kind of take away from this slide is, is how much those juvenile Coho are moving throughout the estuary, this lower Coquill area. When the project first started, we expected to see most juvenile Coho move in a downward direction through the Coquill River. But that is not what we're seeing. We're seeing, you know, these little fish, six inches long, swim from Riverton all the way back up to Winter Lake multiple times. And, and it's not just a few fish out of all the fish that we're catching. We're catching two thousand to twenty-five hundred fish a year and tagging them and tracking them throughout the system. We're seeing twenty-five percent of fish visit multiple sites throughout the winter and springtime. So it's really important that we have this off-channel habitat for the fish. They do use it. And from the previous slide, you can see how large they become when they are using that off-channel habitat.
Julie, could you go over to the picture and show us what the legend is? And I suspect it's different areas, but I'd like to know where those areas are.
So this is the Winter Lake Project that we're talking about now. Here's the tide gate for there. The Beaver Creek and Coledo Tide Gate is this red dot up there. And that habitat goes up and kind of spreads out through the top of the screen. And our sampling site for that location is right above there. And then we have down here, we have the Sea Storm Tylenol Restoration Project, which is on forty-two South. And that's down just south of Riverton. And then across the way, we have the Lower Coquill River Wetland and Stream Enhancement Project. And that's our smallest project here. And so they're all different sized tide gates. You had seen the photo of the Winter Lake Tide Gate. And that's this monstrous infrastructure. This smallest tide gate down here is only a six-foot diameter tide gate. But we're still seeing fish coming and go every single day. And we see them stay there for weeks, sometimes months at a time. And they hop back and forth between these two sites very frequently. And then we see a lot of fish come back up here and then enter into Winter Lake or Beaver Slough.
Wow, thank you.
So I guess to, to end, I just want to highlight how balanced projects like Phase Three and the Winter Lake Project and the rest that I've been describing really benefit both local ranchers and farmers and ensuring that future generations will see Coho in the Coquill.
Thank you, Julie. Can we give Steve a...
I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes.
So you want me to start?
Yeah, go ahead, we can't see you, but we can hear you, that's fine.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, that's probably best for all concerns, so anyhow. My, uh, thank you Commissioners for the chance to, to comment remotely. I have an appointment at four o'clock and couldn't be both places at once, so anyhow. I have two sets of comments today. Marie Simons, who is the Executive Director for the Abandoned Dunes Charitable Foundation, which most of you know as the Wild Rivers Coast Alliance, couldn't be here today. She's traveling and asked me to give a few comments on abandoned dunes. One of our goals has been to help local agricultural landowners on the South Coast and promote the working lands concept. We focused on providing critical seed money to startup projects, which is always the most difficult type of funding to obtain. In the case of Winter Lake, we were among the first funders, along with the Coquill Tribe, to provide critical first-time funding for feasibility studies such as the Economic Studies, Hydrology Studies, Geotech Work, Salmon Population Studies, and so on. We've also provided funding for the length of the project for difficult-to-obtain items as well as providing critical match dollars for larger grant applications. And so we continue to look for opportunities to benefit all aspects of the local economy, which in turn benefits, provides benefits to the entire local community, so. And with that, my next set of comments is ju, are mine alone, not, not tied to abandoned dunes, but just based on my eleven-plus years working on the project. So I was there for the initial development of the project. And the three goals of the project were to work with the local drainage district, local agricultural landowners, and other partners to replace the aging tide gate system, which you've all already heard about. We brought together over twenty funders, funding partners to fund the projects, which is quite a feat in itself. We had an extensive outreach to the public, discussed the project with well over four hundred meetings, tours, and presentations. We met with both proponents and opponents of the project to work through issues. We've always looked for win-win situations to issues and, and almost, and to my knowledge, found those win-win situations. We've always looked for win-win situations to issues and almost, and to my knowledge, found those win-win situations to resolve issues. All stages of the project and activities that we had were presented to the Drainage District Board of Directors for sign-off and approval. And while I worked there, all of those, the board approvals were unanimous. These meetings were also open to the public. As Fred went over, there's just a huge number of permits and reviews necessary to do a project like that. And we should be looking for ways to streamline these permitting processes, not adding to time and expenses by adding additional layers of permitting. All three phases of the project need to be completed for the project to be operated correctly and realize the benefits to ag landowners and Fish and Wildlife Resources and the public. This is one of the largest estuary restoration projects along the coast, and the goal should be to see it completed and operating effectively and efficiently. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So can we go to the next slide, please? So in conclusion, we thank you for the opportunity to bring this information to you today. Our stewardship here is important. We've been blessed that we've seen generations of these landowners and others in the community to be able to enjoy the benefits of the resources that we've got here. And we take pride in that. And we want to be able to continue to manage these resources for the benefit, the maximum benefit of everyone. We would request that the additional or the administrative conditional use, we go ahead and put this on through as a administrative conditional use. If you go back to that slide, there's just a small portion of this request and project that is impacted in the Coquill River Estuary Management Plan. And that kind of, you know, it meets that criteria. We, in addition to that, you have to ask the question of whether this is the best use of resources to go farther down that path. It's pretty clear that this is, it's not a real complex thing. It's just a request to completing and upgrading the infrastructure. And we would additionally request that we could have your support in the future. There'll be more of these kind of projects. It's not the place today, but I can tell you that there's some real changes coming that we're aware of at the state and federal level, making this process more complex now than even it was before. And we would hope that the board of commissioners can be supportive of the efforts that we've got to move this forward. Thank you for your time.
Do we have some questions?
Thank you.
Is your time going?
Absolutely. We do need to take some questions, yeah. You have some questions?
Oh, yeah. I think...
So I'm going to request a statement or comment sheet around there. I'm not sure if we're included at that. Does anyone have that? Okay.
Did you have some comments?
Yes. I, I've heard that you're going to add more marsh. I haven't seen that today in the presentation. Is that a misunderstanding on my part or other people's part?
Yes.
How many acres of grazing land do we have now, and how many will I have after completion of Phase Three?
The whole, the whole project of Phase, or on Phase Three, I think, is roughly 1,300 acres. That could be off a little bit. The impact is probably not more than, I don't know the exact numbers, but I don't think we're talking more than probably 10 to 20 acres at most, if that much.
That makes sense from what I've seen today.
No, the wintertime benefits, when it's covered with water, we'll see more water. But the summertime benefits to the forage production won't change materially at all.
So one other question. We haven't seen this in the valley. No question. This strikes me that what you're proposing here by linking swales or depressions in the valley that are now remaining watered after a flood irrigation period will drain more quickly with what you're talking about here, eliminating what currently must be mosquito habitat. Is that, am I thinking right or wrong?
That is absolutely correct. This project is designed to have water run downhill. And two things. One is the reconstruction of the canals degrade so that they will drain out. It is one part of it. The other part of it is to clean them out and size the culverts appropriately so that we, in the time we've got to move water, that we can move it without impediment. And now we've got undersized culverts that hold up the movement of water. We've also got channels that are completely clogged, both with sediment and vegetation. And so a significant part of this project is to get that channelization and everything sized appropriately to be able to move that water, and then to be able to maintain it over time.
The maintenance will be self-regulated, or how are you going to maintain it, Fred?
Well, ideally, and by the design, it's going to allow, we would hope that it becomes more self-maintaining because we're moving more water and whatever. But we will also have the option to go in and take an instruction out wherever it may be to be able to keep that waterfall going and not have to wait for a whole nother permit process.
You know, I'll have to say that we've, in the Coquill Valley, whenever we've had these projects, two of the biggest ones so far have ended up creating, at least in people's minds, mosquito issues.
What?
Two of the bigger, biggest habitat enhancement programs, projects in the Coquill Valley have initially, at least, ended up creating mosquito problems.
Are we talking about mosquitoes today at this meeting?
No, we're not, but it's just, no, we're not. But I think it's a big issue, and I don't want to, I don't want to put it off.
That's not fair. Are we going to...
I've... Let me finish my question, please, then we'll have turns for other people. I think we were able to correct, once we figured out what was done wrong, the mosquito problem in Banded. And I believe that there's a way to correct the mosquito problem that we've had here in the mid-valley. And I'd like someone that knows about mosquitoes more than I to help make my wish come true.
John, that...
It could be me, John.
John, I can tell you that in the design process for Phase Three, both with the engineering and people that had expertise with mosquito habitat, our understanding is that a great key to, this project is a great key to reducing that habitat because we can flow water off the property, off the landscape, and prevent ponding, which is mosquito habitat.
Which is the very same problem we had in Banded.
Exactly. And so we have learned from their design issues, they had to go back and retrofit abandoned projects. And we have taken the knowledge gained there. And our issue right now in our area is, is that we can't get a damn permit to do what we need to do.
But with this, you can.
With this, we can move forward to deal with that, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. I want to make a general comment, and that is I see, I see lots of hands going up, people that want to make comments. This is the comment sign-up. If you haven't signed up on this and you want to comment, please come get it, put your name on it, and then we'll, we will call you in order that your name is on here, okay? I see Mark coming up to sign up on this. All right. So Commissioner Maine, did you have anything to do with that? Did you have anything, Commissioner Maine, before we opened the floor?
No, we're just taking it in there at the moment.
All right. Mark, what's the first name at the top of that list?
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question before we start that? Just, the only question is, is it possible to rebut individuals on the panel that was presented?
Absolutely. Make a note of the rebuttals that you wish to make and issue them during your comments. Fair enough? Thank you. All right.
Comment is on?
Well, in order of the sheet, and I don't know who's at the top of the sheet. There goes your sheet. Name and where you live.
Yep. My name is Jan Hoffman. I bought a five-acre property in Garden Valley in 2015. Suggests to the Winter Lake area and continues to be part of the drainage district today. I'm a retired university professor, teaching soils, irrigation, water management, and hydrology. I would like to thank the Wisconsin Community Development Staff, the board of commissioners, bringing my comments, and as well all the presenters. Think this was very helpful. I will start by stating that I oppose the application as submitted. I strongly recommend considering inclusion of plants that would minimize mosquito invasions in Garden Valley specifically as the proposed expansion of habitat restoration in the Coquill Valley Wildlife Area would likely result in continued increasing mosquito populations. And let me explain. In principle, I'm very supportive of land restoration efforts. However, my main concern is that since completion of the Unit Two restoration, mosquitoes have been a major nuisance and helped issue for Garden Valley residents. Early on, I learned about the restoration plan of Unit Two of the Winter Lake area and the need to replace the tidal gate for better drainage control, and that has not been mentioned yet. The construction of the new tidal gate was completed in the fall of 2018, as Fred was saying. Until that time, there had been no mosquito issue. However, Garden Valley residents started complaining about the mosquito issue in August of 2019, the year after completion of the tidal gate replacement. They expressed concerns about this to the district, speculating that it was caused by the restoration. Their response had been that the mosquito issue may be resolved after repair of the faulty tidal gate installation later this year, hopefully this year. Repeated complaints since 2019 have not made a difference. And if anything, the mosquito invasions have increased and went a wrong direction. Therefore, when learning about the expansion of the habitat restoration of Units One and Three as presented this afternoon, it is my expectation, my expectation that the mosquito problem in Garden Valley will accommodate greater issue. I also inquired whether one of the public officials wildlife, and they agreed that mosquitoes are likely to breed in non-fish breeding pools. However, the lack of addressing the mosquito issue by ODFW is contrary to their five-year management plan that specifically addressed mosquitoes and plans to minimize the possibility of increasing mosquito populations. In the 2016 plan, ODFW provided a series of solutions, including enhancing the population of mosquito attacking fish and introduction of bacteria to the TPI, which apparently has been successful in the Badland Marsh area. ODFW concluded in that report at that time that depending on need, ODFW may progressively use more aggressive means to control mosquitoes. However, to my knowledge, no or little action was taken towards mitigating mosquito populations. To conclude, I would like for the proposal to assure inclusion of provisions of mosquito mitigation plans and their actual amplification when needed. Second, to halt execution of the Phase Three restoration, and that has demonstrated that the mosquito issue has been resolved.
Agreed.
Thank you for your answer.
Can we keep clapping down there?
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, folks, the clapping actually causes a little bit of an audio problem. So if we can, if we could keep that going, that'd be helpful. So regarding the, I mean, I have a general question following Mr. Hoffman's comments. And that is, I mean, my understanding, my takeaway from this proposed completion of the Phase Three project is that it will reduce the amount of available habitat for burgeoning mosquito populations. Did I not get that right?
That is correct.
Okay, so, so, you know, we're at a little bit of odds how we could see mosquito mitigation prior to the completion of the project. And so I don't, you know, I mean, I don't understand how we resolve that particular conflict. If you could come back up, Mr. Hoffman's, real quick and just...
I don't know what the process would be.
So we need to, we need to get it on the audio, once you're up at the microphone, if you would, please. Thank you.
I'm not clear, I'm not clear on the process. But like I stated in my conclusion statement, I think when I read the plan, I didn't see anything about mosquitoes. Despite, and all the comments, most of the comments that you will receive or have received will be related to the mosquitoes.
Right.
That does not mean, like myself, that we are against restoration.
Right.
But it should be restoration such that indeed impacts on, the people surrounding the, surrounding the area are not impacted. We are stakeholders as well.
Right.
So we're talking about impact on fish and wildlife, but you're not looking at impact on the people.
Well, we are.
Well, you are, but the proposal didn't. So my suggestion would be, and so I didn't, I don't mean it precisionally about halting the project. I think the project is a very good project. But it should include language related to human health and mosquito issues. And so my last point was, okay, how can they demonstrate is, well, give it a year, maybe two years. I mean, there's a whole process in place in order to start with Phase Three. I think we need, as people that live in the area, we need to be fairly convinced that whatever the project outcomes will be, that it's not going to be affected by your studio's mosquitoes.
Okay. Point, point well taken. Thank you very much. It appears to me that, number one, based on what I saw up Garden Valley this past summer, that it scarce could get any worse. I mean, it was, it was the worst I've ever seen anywhere. I've never seen anything like it. And so if we're to take all these folks at their word at what the outcome would be of this completion of Phase Three, it does appear that mitigation of the mosquito populations would be a result. But I do agree that having that language included as a stipulated commitment would be valuable as well. Dick Mork left. Gail Olson. I think Gail's still here. Good afternoon.
It's hard for us to believe that it's going to be better after Phase Three. I'm Gail Olson, and I live out Garden Valley. I've lived there since 75. Most of us at Garden Valley, and many people who are part... We were opposed to Phase One and Two of the wetland project, our concerns were flooding farmland and mosquitoes at the very onset. Fred, Fred Netherland, the Nature Conservancy, ODFW assured us there would not be a mosquito problem. During the summer, I take care of my project, or my property and my son's property while he's away working. It's hard work. I mow the lawns with push-on lures, there's acres. I really, I care for my son's nursery plants. It has always been very enjoyable, health-giving, hard work. You have made it a miserable, health-laden chore. I have to wear a long-sleeve sweatshirt, gloves, hat with netting, it's hot out. It's franny, I have to franny to get it done so I can get back inside. A lot of people aren't taking care of their yards and plants anymore. It's beyond annoying being outside, it's frightening. A very nice gentleman that works for Roseburg Blumber, and he checks on things up in the woods, Harold is his name, he's tormented by mosquitoes. The fellows working in the woods are tormented. My neighbor Martian's farm animals are tormented. The little dogs and cats and the deer, they're tormented. There seems to be no concern that the neighbors are tormented by thousands of mosquitoes every moment we're outside. Most people in our neighborhood have always had a love and respect for our surroundings, or beloved here. You are taking away our love of the land and our good way of life for your own selfish, self-righteous golden project. God made this great earth and all people. We are supposed to love and care for the land. God made people His crown and jewel. Most folks would agree that people are worth more care and respect than wetlands in Coho. Grandparents have a right to enjoy sitting outside to relax in the summer with visitless friends. Reagan's kids have a right to play outside in good weather without being tormented. Kim and Teresa have a right to enjoy being outdoors with their grandkids. Beaverson Drainage District and Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife have a responsibility to get rid of the mosquitoes. They have DTI available, and there are vector control guidelines that were made in 2014. No one has listened to us, and I thank goodness that Coos Health and Wellness has sent that survey out. My son and I, we liked to canoe, and we were out in the wetlands on Christmas Day. There were portions of the waterway, it was just amazing, I didn't know what it was at first. There were bubbles all over the water, and it was mosquito larvae husks floating, and mosquitoes were coming out. We had had four days of good weather. The mosquitoes were hatching on Christmas. You have to know who we are, you know, and we're angry, we're angry because of the mosquitoes, and we're hurt, we're cursed. Yeah, these are some drainage districts that ODFW didn't keep their word, they said there were no mosquitoes, or if there were mosquitoes, didn't take care of it. And they don't listen. We aren't the enemy. You have disrupted our peaceful way of life, you have closed your minds and hearts to our needs. The people of this Cohoe Valley matter more than the wetlands in Coho.
Thank you, Gail. Dan Varjon?
What I have to say today is a bit tangential to what you've been saying, but I was supposed to speak about mosquitoes, I guess some of the residents are not going to do that, it's been dumb. The only thing I would add, you got dang gay fever in California right now. That's from illegals coming across the border. Hades mosquito-borne viral disease. Chicken blenya and Zika right behind it. So I hope they solve that problem. The other thing you mentioned in the letter you sent off to ODFW and the legislature was the predation problem, stream due to invasive species. I would also add to that, well, a major predator on these salmon smalls are double-pressing cormorants, which I have seen at the mounts of a couple of the creeks off North Bay, Kentucky, where I live, where they show up when the smalls are running. They systematically dive and herd these things into the shallows, where even the gulls and the herons are knocking them off. The point I'm making here is they may increase Coho, juvenile Coho production, but I can bet you money, you will not see a significant statistical increase in the number of adults returning there. You're not going to see a five, six, tenfold increase in the number of adults, in and a half. And over the last thirty to forty years, this state has spent hundreds of millions of dollars in salmon restoration, and nowhere in this state can they show that they have done that.
That's right.
That money would be far better spent putting in standard-the-art hatcheries and hatch boxes on these.
I live in hatch boxes.
And you'll hear the argument, oh, you know, you're going to alter the genetics of the runs, and that, that's all crap, because now we have inexpensive ways to do cross-sectional analyses of the genetic makeup of your returning runs. You use those as your brood stock and coosie jacks or whatever. The salmon and trout family, the salmon, genetically are plastic as hell, enormous genomes. When I was growing up, I commissioned the CR, where they're putting trout into the streams that came out of Kansas hatcheries, and they took off his breeding population.
That's right.
So that's just a ridiculous argument. And a lot of these streams and channels they're creating, if they want to get around some of the predators, they're going to have to do something like put hatch boxes in to get the numbers really up there, or it's not going to work. The last thing, yeah, the next thing is this. This whole process, what bothers me, and why I'm so vehemently against changing pasture lands into marsh, is because it's a deliberate and systematic process that has been promulgated by the agencies for the last twenty-five, thirty years.
Here, here.
You cannot maintain, including me, bottomland pastures so that they remain productive. That's the only reason they can work with the waterman property. They got it to the point where it wasn't economically feasible to make a living off of it. They sold it. That's happening on Kentucky, where I live. Some idiot who's got a lot of money bought up some farm property that nobody could make a living on anymore because they couldn't dredge and do the other stuff they need to do, and he's just rerouted the stream, I think they spent over a million dollars on this project.
A little bit difficult.
And you're not going to see one damn extra Coho salmon come back up that river. Here's the more telling point, though. The downstream neighbor is Brett Clarnell, he owns about a hundred acres. He owns another eighty up in Batman, where I live. When they were doing this project, he asked, since we've got the equipment here, could I maybe dredge out, you know, the stream in Kentucky Creek on my property? And he said, I'm willing to put some of the little off-water ponds, you know, to help the animals during high flow, the fish. They said, no, you can pull the banks back, but you can't go deeper. Why? Because on every one of these pastures, what's the one thing you can see visibly easily? Junkus reeds, they call it bunch grass, it's coming up everywhere, because the water table in all the streams is up, and therefore, the subirigation is so close to the surface, you start getting wetland plants in your pastures. That's systematic and deliberate, because they know that they're going to end up getting them all eventually. That's what it's coming down to. And if you don't think I'm right, do you remember the late nineties, Commissioner Maine? When I wrote that threatening letter, yeah, to the agencies and told them I was dredging, I didn't give a damn if they gave me a permit or not after two denials, based on ridiculous reasons too, by the way. Fortunately, Messily, our state senator, Ken, had them all come down to the North Bend Library to have a meeting. Every agency shows ten, I would like somebody mentioned here, you have to deal with ten to fifteen of these things. We couldn't get anything resolved in the first three hours of the meeting, when all I did was ask, what do we do with dress wells when we get them out of the creek? Because you couldn't put them out of the pastures in those days. They didn't come to any conclusion. I turned around to Ken and said, I'm sorry, it's none of their business what I do, and the little woman next to me was representative EPA Seattle, she went, who? I said, I apologize. Next morning, half-day session, were you there, Commissioner?
I don't remember.
Well, anyway, they had the state police up front, telling us that they would come onto our properties and find us, write us up, and arrest us possibly if we started dredging without permits. Young man come into a room, stand in the back, he interrupted them. He goes, I'm digging out a ditch right now, that ditch is not truly a ditch, it was a waterway, that's been done for three generations since they changed our pasture. So will you come onto my property? Will you be armed when you come on there to arrest me and find me? And they said, yeah. And this is a direct vote. You'll never leave alive. At which point, about fifteen of us stood up and left the room. They had denied permits up and down the Oregon coast, because it all, that was a heavy rain year like this year, all the streams had sanded in, the Coho were running out, the pastures had died. Within two weeks, everybody got a permit. I'm sorry to say, if it takes that to get these people the hell out of your way, we've really come to a point where we're in real trouble. Because I'm telling you, there are a lot of people out there that are a lot less judicious than I am. They're not going to put up with this stuff much longer. I guess the last thing I wanted to say to you is this, and especially regards these two gentlemen right here with their right. The US Supreme Court just ruled last month that your bottomland pasture is not in their jurisdiction. It's not a wetland. You might have wetland plants on it, but it is not a wetland by the latest definition. None of the bottomland pastures in this county are wetlands under their jurisdiction. There might be wetland plants on, well, that's because they also won't let you dredge, all right? The other thing they said is navigable streams, they read you the definition for that. Eh, you can get a canoe or a motorboat, no, that's not good enough. There's only three in Cokeal, the Coos, and the Millicoma. They don't have jurisdiction over that creek on my property. They don't, period. Then, of course, they'll use the Clean Water Act. Oh, my God. Well, you're dredging, you're taking stuff out, you're not putting anything in. And you're actually increasing the survivorship of smalls or juvenile salmon. And that's why this stuff needs to just go away. I mean, and I'm telling you right now, this summer, I'll be perfectly legal to go out, rotate till my pasture, bring in dump truck loads of topsoil and fill in the low spots, and they can't do a damn thing about it, or if they do, the Pacific Legal Foundation will be standing right with me in court, and will sue the hell out of me. That's my major objection to this whole idea of converting these things into marshes. Thank you.
So, Dan?
Yep.
Look up Arkansas Fish and Wildlife versus US government, Army Court. It was about five years ago, US Supreme Court, first time ever, US Supreme Court set a partial taming has to be compensated for. All this riparian area, this HCP stuff, all this other crap, the farmer's fields, now has to be compensated for by the state and the federal government.
See, I'm absolutely for the zoning process here, Lori. Because our group in California, where they were paving over farmland that had two-foot thick layers of topsoil, which is just wrong. But these are EFU lands, and as far as I'm concerned, making them into a marsh is not, should not be an allowable use of EFU land, period.
Not mine, your legislation just expanded the zoning outside the cities to paving over and putting more buildings on the farmland.
Yeah.
Just a couple of weeks ago.
But see, when they did that, you know, people say, oh, they took your land. No, they didn't. I mean, not without compensation, because we don't pay hardly anything in property taxes on farmland. And I'm fine with that, I'm being compensated to not put a home on, in other words. But when you come along and the state puts in an ORS that wetlands are waters of the state, you just took my pasture, you didn't give me a damn thing for it. So I'm absolutely against that.
Commissioner, I have a question.
Not of you.
Huh?
Not of you.
Oh.
You are concerned about conversion of pasture lands to marsh. I wanted to ask.
And notice, I don't call them wetlands, these are pasture lands.
You're concerned about that. Mr. Messily, Mr. Eisenhardt, Stewart, is, are there any marshes being created as part of Phase Three?
No.
Good. It's draining the agricultural units, one and two.
So that's my understanding of this project, after listening to what we heard today, and I'm not aware...
But if you're going to put in ninety thousand feet of channeling, is that one of the figures I heard? How the hell are you going to run livestock in a place like that allowed to be in the water?
The channelization, if you will, is the rebuilding of existing channels, and then the farther you get, the more, the farther you get away from the main canal or whatever, it comes up, and you're going to shape that so that you don't have any poisoning, so that you've got, you've got engineered drainage, and that will vary from parcel to parcel depending on what's there.
Thank you, Fred. I just wanted to make this clear, because I think there's been a concern that more marshes being created by Phase Three, and I believe that not to be the case.
That is absolutely not my pack for it. There would be more marshes.
I'll stand corrected on that. Well, I didn't actually imply they were doing that, but...
Yeah, no, I'll confirm that the actual elimination of standing marsh areas was what I was seeing as the objective of this project.
Absolutely.
So it seems as if the advancement of this project actually proactively serves the interests of all of us who are concerned about the mosquito problem. I don't, I'm not at all convinced that it solves the salmon problem. But I think that it does appear that it would improve our mosquito...
Again, one of my major points, just to make you aware, this is going on throughout the county, that we're losing agricultural land because of these regulations.
Well, it's not just the county, it's everywhere.
I know.
Yeah.
And, you know, even these guys, they shouldn't have to go through ten or fifteen agencies to get something done, but interestingly, they're going to get the provision to maintain things if they sand in, for example. We can't do that as landowners. We have to apply every damn time, so, anyway.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Varjon. I have Verna Rose, and after Verna is going to be Joe Metzler.
My name's Verna Rose, and I've been in this district, Drainage District, for almost fifty-two years. So I'm talking about the Drainage District, mainly, than the mosquitoes or anything else. First of all, I was promised that I could get out of the Drainage District. I filled out the papers of this Drainage District. That was back in 2013, 2014. I had also asked in early nineties, when there was a different board on there, and that, when I requested that, that's when I found out I was in a Beaverson Drainage District that was the big valley. I have three villages, it's probably in Bottom Lake. This district, what it's did to me over the fifty-two years, has increased taxes, levied a bond, and sued me. It's cost me nothing but money in this Drainage District. I have never been able to get a minutes on this district, nor have I ever seen a... I have never been able to get a minutes on this district, nor have I ever seen a report on the finances of this district. This district serves the people that filed this petition only. I don't remember exact number, but when we tried to find, fight a bond that was levied against us in this district, we had no votes, because it's voted on acres of land. And that's all. We could not get out of it. So we tried not even going to the meeting to pass it. They did it and run it as a insurance thing. If you don't show up, we get to vote however we want. I am tired of being in this district, not having a say, because I have three votes, and then one person can outgrow in my, in the whole Garden Valley, and anybody else that's got small land in that district. And I do not think that all of us together has five percent of the votes. So I'm requesting, and I, and there's never been no mention, has anybody heard any mention for the funds coming for FOIA and the land management of this table's land? They already voted, when they voted their bond in, at some later date, if I'm not correct, on the dollar amount, I don't know, forty million dollars that they can access in any other, they've been talking. I am tired of being in this district. So I don't know how their fund is, but I don't want none of my tax dollars or the bond that it's on my tax levy. I don't want it anymore. So, under Oregon ORS 198.882, I own less than five percent of the acreage of this district, and I have paid taxes less than that. So I have no significant value to this district, and they definitely don't have none for me. I want out of this district, and I'm tired of being saying, "Well, it's on the agenda, we can get to it, there's no more time, there's no this." I want out. I can't say it any other way. And you're my last hope. I went to the tax department, they said, "This board," and I'm assuming whoever's the head manager at the time, is the one that says how many taxes is paid and what land is paid. So to remove me, it seems to me the simplest thing is, this board says Verna Rose's property and anybody else's property that's under a certain acre no longer has to pay taxes and are out of this district. They have said repeatedly over fifty-two years, they have never did anything, Garden Valley wrote, never will, so we have no benefits, no say, and only pay taxes. And I am tired. I do not have, if I paid taxes for this county, only on my own social security, I would be paying two months just to pay the county taxes. And it's already trying to raise other revenues in the county. The money I pay for this district, I'd rather see it go to the casteration of cats so we don't have cats running all over than I would on all this other stuff. So under this law, I'm asking my commissioners, each one of them, the planning commission, anybody else in here to stand up and say, "This is not fair. This is only supporting the estuaries, wildlife, and the landowners, and their house is not on their property. This is nothing but farmland that they raised their cattle, hasn't been for fifty-two years." And I do believe some of this estuary and zoning changes and state planning for their benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Cinda Arnie will be after Mr. Metzler.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Commissioner Maine, Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner Sweeney. My name is Joe Metzler. I'm a retired U.S. Coast Guard Coast Guardsman, and I've been living in Coos County most of my life. I grew up in Roseburg. Since I retired from the Coast Guard in 2011, I've been working in the fish and wildlife field all over Coos County, and I've become a semi-expert on a lot of the subjects we're talking about today. I'd like to open at the salary one that I worked at the Bandon-Nile Spind Marsh in 2013 when the mosquito explosion happened there, and I was the interim executive of the bird surveys there, so I know how bad it can get. But I also watched how U.S. Fish and Wildlife, the dress staff project, quickly started reducing with the poison that's in the water there to get the mosquito larva numbers down, and how they went in and raided it again to solve that problem. It was very impressive how fast the federal government fixed their problem. What was great was ODFW was just about to start their Winter Lakes project, and they saw the mistakes that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife made out there, and made sure that they didn't make those same mistakes there. And I was part of all those same conversations that we had, those four hundred meetings, listening to the public, and I thought that we had come to a conclusion that the Winter Lakes project was going to be a good thing here. I'm so sorry for the people that live in Garden Valley. I realize, it seems like it's a long ways away from the Phase Two of the Winter Lakes production. I didn't realize that mosquitoes from out there actually went all the way up into the Garden Valley to cause these problems. But I am hoping that if we complete Phase Three, we can go back through now and actually open these places up and create those habitats where water's flowing, and we won't have mosquitoes. But what I'd like to say overall is, as a naturalist and a public lands advocate, I have been enjoying the Kokea Valley wildlife area to no ends. The duck hunting is fantastic out there, the bird watching is fantastic. I'm with the Kierg, the Audubon Society. We hope to go out there and have our funds matched possibly by ODFW funds and put up bird watching stations, possibly raise platforms like they have at Fern Ridge. Fern Ridge has become, it was sort of a marshland restoration with the Fern Ridge reservoir, but it has become a huge bird watching destination for people all over Oregon and the western United States. And I think the Kokea Valley can do the same thing. If we have bird watching promoted out there like we've been doing, you'll have tons of people coming to Kokea with money to spend in your local area to see these birds. We will also have this wonderful marshland restoration that's going on, and trust me, don't give up on wild salmon. Hatch boxes are not the complete answer. That means if your hatch boxes stop, salmon die. If we keep them in the wild spawning, they'll always be there no matter what happens to us, and our future generations will have something to at least work with. But anyways, don't give up on it. This marsh is a fantastic place. It is an incredible spot for people to recreate. Get out there and see it. Promote this, I think it's great for Coos County.
So, for your information, the only reason U.S. Fish and Wildlife acted about getting rid of the mosquitoes is because we commissioners caught it on the phone and called our federal representatives and senators, and they made them come to the table.
And what a wonder.
They didn't do it voluntarily.
No, but that's what's great about these kind of places, that having strong county commissioners who speak up for us. Thank you very much.
They didn't do that on the road.
No, but that's the great thing, so they have to speak up.
No, this concept there, they didn't do it willingly.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Metzler. Cinda Arnie?
I think we've established a mosquito issue.
Okay, very good. Eric Olson?
I'll pass, thank you. But thank you for giving me and others the opportunity to speak.
Ah, you, okay, good. I couldn't quite see your mouth moving because it's been there. Okay, Daryl Smith?
Hey, you're on. When they turn to face the audience, we don't pick up any audience.
Yeah, so, so, folks, really, you're addressing the dais here, not the audience. Please keep facing this way so we can get on the tape. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So I guess I came, I didn't know quite what.
Name and location and address, please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. I hear you better than you're talking to me, Daryl. Thank you.
I, I didn't know that this wasn't about adding more fish and wildlife restoration area, I thought it was. And so I wanted to bring forward that, two different times. One, was how the fish and wildlife seems to want to control our agricultural and forest areas. And with the, with the nature conservancy, the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, the help of BLM, that'll give us a site. You all drive by on 38, and you see the elk viewing area. And once upon a time, I was complimented for donating the blue land treatments and other things to that piece of property. And the gentleman I was hunting with that day, or I should say Sporting Place, his first name is Tom, I'll leave it at that, he was a manager for the BLM. He arranged to, because farmer was having some fiscal problems, he arranged to buy the end going, the farthest end of that, that field, just before he'd go up the hill. But that was where the tide gates were. And so he decided that he would take care of that problem. He just closed off the ditches, and he flooded the other part of the area, up farther on the farm, and forced the guy to sell, because he couldn't use his property. Now, all of a sudden, it became ODFW's property, and they manage that now. So again, they added property. The same thing can be said of Conrad Forest Products. They have eleven acres, did, or still do, who paid the taxes on it. We asked that we might be able to fill it. We bought the property for that measure from the farmer that was there that retired. So I started to fill it, and I got a call, said, "Hey, you better check the state lands, because you've got wetland plants in that field, and therefore, you can't do anything without getting permission." So we had to go with Corps of Engineers, the DQ, and the Fish and Wildlife. So we presented the problem to them and what we wanted to do. And it came back that I needed all three of them to approve, or I couldn't fill the property. So the Corps of Engineers said, "Okay." And the reason they did is because the senior Bush President had an executive order that they couldn't lose any more marshland, but this was already been zoned, so it was taken care of, so they didn't have a problem. DQ didn't have a problem with water quality, but the Fish and Wildlife, you know what Phil Anderson said, "There was no gain for the Fish and Wildlife to allow us to do that." Gain, wasn't their property. Gain. I couldn't fill it, so I could put in, John, that molder, so we could run two-by-three, two-by-two, three-by-four, three-by-six for export. Nine jobs. Fish and Wildlife. Fish and Wildlife, if they were responsible, they would have checked their contract. That gentleman right there, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, that you told me that the heavy equipment on that low gradient, okay, going down, they depressed certain parts. I don't understand why you didn't have them fix it. That's part of your contract, it's got to be done. Instead, we ended up with pools and ponds. I will address the mosquito then. But if we look at the different aspects of how the Fish and Wildlife have changed Oregon, southern Oregon, I mean, we can start with the spotted owl. I testified in Washington, DC, and the first report mentioned the barn owl. Fifteen years later, one hundred and fifty-six thousand family wage jobs are gone.
That's right.
Pardon me?
That's right, sir.
Are gone. Family wage jobs. Next thing comes snowy plover. Whose fault was the snowy plovers listed? Fish and Wildlife, federal, they decided to plant the grass up in Sandus to stop it from moving. But what that did was made the snowy plovers nesting areas could be attacked. And so what do we end up? We can't even drive down to the, during nesting times, everything else. All along, I even talked to some, some of the naturalists who worked for the California, and they recognized the fact that they shouldn't have planted the grass. And then we come to the marble marlet. You don't hear them saying anything about that. That plant, that particular bird species spends eighty percent of its time in the marine environment. It leaves the eggs and the lot of chicks in on the limbs. They don't build a nest, and both parent leave. It's not what you call a right bird, you know? Anyway, my point is, is the Oregon Department Fish and Wildlife, I don't believe can be trusted. And I, and I personally, I mean, I don't mean not being disparaging to the people in the room, I'm just saying, the results speaks for themselves. I, I, what's the difference? If you cut a fin, or you have a naturally fin, the DNA's got to be the same. And they certainly haven't put the hatcheries back. They certainly haven't let us do the boxes, and I'm different with that. And if you're going to trust the Audubon Society for your count on ducks, that's ridiculous, because there is almost a forty percent reduction. They've moved into the Springfield and the Mlambe Valley, not here, on the up or the down. I'm sorry. I just don't trust their figures.
Daryl, I think I need to point out that a lot of what you have accused the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife of doing, including the elk refuge, is really not in their purview. It's the U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
That certainly is true on Highway 38, that's the U.S. Forest.
That's the U.S. Forest, I mean, the national one?
BLM. BLM, okay.
No, but it's, but the Fish and Wildlife, right.
We manage the elk on the property, that's all.
That's all? Okay, I apologize. All right. But still, the way they got it, what I'm saying is, is we see this movement, how are we going to trust them on anything else they have? I don't, I don't care what Mr. Metzler has to do particularly. I think he shouldn't do anything to his property he wants. I don't, why can't you dig a ditch and spread the dirt? Makes sense to me. I'd like to do it on my own property. But, anyway, I just, if the Oregon Fish and Wildlife has something to do with, with what's going on with the rest of the valley are going to continue, I just, I just don't want to support that.
Thank you, Daryl. It does seem, it does seem unlikely to me that Mr. Messer, Mr. Messely and Mr. Eisenhardt would want to deliberately inundate their land and make it unusable. That wouldn't make any sense. I have Jim Bennet. And after that, who's next?
Jim Bennet-Bannon. See, have you noticed, if you try to use common sense or an assumption of goodwill or local knowledge to understand what's going on, you just get a headache, it just makes your head bad. You have to understand, and it gives me no comfort to say it, that we're at war. We're in an unusual brand of warfare, spiritual, informational, and spirit, and institutional warfare. They've weaponized all of our institutions, from Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, all the way up to our whole educational system, our universities, our healthcare system. Have to also understand, UN Agenda 21 Sustainable Development turned Agenda 2030, you have to understand that the state of Oregon has officially signed on to this UN agenda. Now, the land use portion of this comprehensive agenda that looks like a phone book, the document, provides for your not being here, your not living here, your moving into human habitation zones. So you're, you real environmentalist at home property and pay the price to live in the country, your appreciation of it will be reduced to old photographs. This project has no standing, zero, none. And the reason is because constitutionally, our rulebook, it has absolutely no standing. There is no reference to consensus-based decision-making in the Constitution at all. These four guys are going to have to listen to some stuff more than once. I've put them on notice with well, well intention, as I will some of you people in the agency. The federal constitution, the state constitution, and other passages are very clear. It's not a interpretation, it's not in the gray, it's completely illegal, because we're in a representative republic, which is the condition under which Oregon was accepted into the Union. In redundancy, it's illegal. Because the, because the consensus process subplants and perverts our voice, which is central to a representative republic. Now, science isn't something that you purchase or commission, and that's what happens with all these overreaching projects. I've got the, the, the report that was commissioned on this project, they're all the same. Now, UN Agenda 21 Sustainable Development's about a lot of things, but a genuine concern for the environment, for humanity, is not among them. The last Gorman Fuzzy Salmon project was the dam removal. They scrubbed the- They scrubbed the truth, they censored everything. I'm doing a story on it now, I was to page twelve and I couldn't find any organic journalism. All it was is warm and fuzzy language about the salmon. Well, they blew up the dam, now everything is dead, all the salmon are dead.
On the Klamath.
On the Klamath, forgive me, what did I say?
You didn't say.
Oh, okay. On the Klamath, everything's dead. They tried releasing babies, thousands, they're all dead. To call it an environmental catastrophe would not be exaggerating in the slightest. You have no standing. The project, in terms of our rulebook, is invisible. It has nothing to do with whatever science has been commissioned. The root of the whole deal is based in the consensus process, which is diametrically opposed to our Constitution. If you think that the project has merit, we're in America, you take it to a vote. That's the way we do things. Thanks.
Thank you. It does, it does seem to me that the, I mean, from what I've heard so far today, it does sound as if the completion of the Phase Three is actually an enhancement of private property use, not a detraction from it. So while I appreciate what you're saying, this is not, this is not...
It's fine, it's just consensus is illegal. Take it to a vote of the people, that's it.
Well, okay. I don't know if it rises to that level. Okay, Kim Pierce.
So thank you, Kim Pierce, Bannon, Oregon. You know, you've got a whole new meaning to carry over there, Rod.
That's right.
Anyway, yeah, I was just kinda interested. I heard Mr. Messer Lee here mention landowners and stakeholders. What on earth is a stakeholder? That sounds like a weasely statement to me, like somebody who's got no business in saying anything about anything if they ain't the landowner. Who are the stakeholders? How do you become a stakeholder? And how do they have the audacity to tell people down here what they can do with their land? This is criminal. You know, this sounds like communist people. You know, when I was over in Vietnam, they had a thing called know your enemy. And I think, I see some of them in this room right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kim Daniels? Kim still here? That's what he said. No. And yes, Teresa? It's gone, it's all, Kim and Teresa left, okay. Mark Payne? Mark still here?
No, he's gone.
Mark left, okay. All right. Is there, is there anyone who did not yet sign up who would like to make any comments?
I have one more question.
Please come up for me.
Can I stand here?
We need to get you on the recording, I apologize, but it's a trek up there, but...
I guess this question is to everybody, because I don't understand the project, but my land doesn't even touch China Creek. And when I was told, the letters that I received, two of them with amendment, that it was only by regulation have to be sent out five hundred feet of this project. As far as I know, there's only been two people that received those letters. So, you know, and there's ten, at least ten families that's in this district that didn't get knowledge unless it was by word. So I don't understand. So there's just another sign showing that we don't get information even on our own Beavers Flow Drainage District. I am beyond five hundred feet of this project supposedly. So I assume that this project is probably gonna affect my land. Now I'm finding here and it's supposed to help it, which it needs to drain the water out of the valley, that's always been the criteria. But my question is, is why doesn't everybody that's in this district, Beavers Flow Drainage, get information from the district that they belong to? And stuff. And why did I get it when my land don't touch it? And there's three other people that's closer to this project that didn't get it, letters? None of this stuff makes sense. It seems like it's a manipulation. Who gets information and who don't get information? And stuff, so that's what I don't understand. That's why a lot of people are confused. It's you hear this, you hear that, you might get this, and then think, why are you upset? It's just a little bit of money or it's a little bit of information, well, without proportion. I still think that I'm against any projects down there that affect my land and it only benefits those petitioners' land, whether it's controlling the flow of the water for their cattle or for the estuaries, wildlife and stuff. And where is the funding coming from? In my economy and everybody else that's in that district that does not have enough land to outvote these petitioners in any way, on anything they do, whether they petition this, petition, we didn't vote on. What I'm saying is it's a district that's taxation without representation in any way, shape, and form. And the US commissioners need to know that and anybody else that's in a small district throughout this state. When one landowner has enough or two landlords, when the district's got thirty or less people and three fourths of them can't hold anything down, it's a dictatorship district. Taxation without representation. Again, I request to get out before you vote on passing anything else on this project. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mark?
Sorry.
It's all right. It gave Vern another chance.
I introduce myself, Mark Payne, retired technical engineer for Pacific Gas and Electric. I've retired in this area. I'm a fourth generation landowner on the North Bank Lane. And I used to come up here four or five times a year as a young kid. And I used to work on all the dairy farms that my uncles and grandparents had. And all those ranches are gone now on the North Bank. And it's kinda sad. I've taken upon to myself, I inherited this land on the Randall Island area. It all started, I got involved in thinking about redoing some fencing and all of a sudden I feel like I got involved in politics. It's, I've heard a lot of misinformation, you know, people with misinformation. And I try to get the facts and I try to go through it and then give my own opinion on what I see and what can be done differently. And this whole thing of these town hall meetings, I call it, we've had here lately at the fairgrounds, I think is awesome. I think it's something that you guys should continue. I think it's something that can feel very connected with, you know, with the local people in this great, you guys did a good job on those meetings. Another thing in my life on this land that I own is I've been involved in the salmon restoration with ODFW and the STEF program, Co-Kill Tribe. And I'm trying to do the best I can as a steward of the land that I own. And I've seen mistakes on people on both sides. People, ODF doing things wrong, I've done some things wrong. And there's a lot of room for improvement. And I don't think there's one entity can say, I'm God almighty and that I should, you follow what I say and do. I think things should be hashed out and addressed, you know, address all the issues. I think Mr. Messer Lee here with his property, you know, he's, you can tell he's got passion, his relevance, he's a poor his property, he's a steward of his land. He's got a lot of, a lot of stake there. You know, he loves the land, I can tell. And he's basically wanting to, you know, make his land do well. And why there has to be all these roadblocks and where to get permits, it just baffles me. I think with the entities of ODFW, the Coos Soil and Water Conservation Districts and Watershed, I think you guys could help more with private landowners. Because there's a lot of loops, you know, hoops to jump through, you know? I've experienced that myself as a landowner, putting a pawn down. You know, you have to get, you have to get signed off with Corps of Engineers, Bureau of Land Management, ODFW, all these entities that a lot of people would just say, oh, God, it's too much, I can't, you know? And so I think a lot of landowners should get representation from the local entities here. And I'll be honest with you, you guys, you're not getting a good grade. I mean, the majority of the people here speaking tonight are not getting represented well. I don't know how you guys feel about that. And this whole thing of the mosquitoes, maybe one of you guys could answer, why are the mosquitoes bad?
I don't think they're bad on the refuge where it's at, they're bad in Beavers Flow or phase for the housing people, they eat and buy them out there. When I'm recreating, I've jumped in.
If I may, please, questions will be directed from the desk. Really, you're addressing us, thank you, Mark.
So why are the mosquitoes bad?
Yeah, well, my understanding is that the problem with the mosquitoes this past summer up Garden Valley was because of some tide gates that did not get opened at the correct time to drain the water. And so you ended up with pools of standing water that bred mosquitoes and that perpetuated a problem all the way up the valley.
Okay, who, and who is responsible for those tide gates?
Yeah, I'm not sure who is responsible for that maloperation. Perhaps Fred, can you speak to that?
Well, it's a combination of, you know, we let some water in, but because we can't do this project because our system's clogged, we can't get rid of the water.
Yeah.
And so that causes the pounding. We also had more than normal rain, which adds in the late summer, which adds to it. So it's a combination of things. It's hard to point to one specific item, if you will, that said, okay, this caused it. And then once, you know, once you get the conditions right and it gets rolling, well, then it kind of just adds.
Self-perpetuates. Up here, I had all these questions. Who was the engineering company that you guys were working with? Kaylee?
Well, I don't know who you used for Phase One and Two, but for Phase Three, we were with Kilbrun Water Resources and now we're looking at upstream waterways consulting. Yeah.
Well, I guess I should go on to the other issues I have at hand. On my land, my neighbor, my neighbor's up this area, the Seven Mile Creek, we have a tide gate that's failing. And I did some calculations on the water flows through that stream and it's, there's a seven-foot culvert under the county road, which has failed already, had a school bus collapse on the road into it. You know, it's like all the tide gates here in the county, which need to be held out. You know, what I think I'm trying to say, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horses. You know, you want salmon restoration and you're talking about, you know, making this estuary on this from Messer Lee's property, property of Maine Fire Order. I think that is something that should be done, but I think it should be done in a different order. I think to make the salmon and fish survive and do better, I think they should put money, more money into Beaver Creek, Bear Creek, Seven Mile Creek, Lambeau Creek. All these streams have had tide gates that have failed and they're all plugged up with silt. They used to be salmon resting, you know, bearing streams. And they can't do it now because there's like three feet of sediment. Because of, you know, over the years, in the winter, that water, you know, low tides over here and it's still five, six feet over the culvert, you know, it can't, it can't keep up. So all that sediment coming down off the hills is just laying in the streams. So I feel like that should be a priority over Mr. Messer Lee's property. I think his stuff should be done, but at a different stage. So I feel like you've done two stages already in Winter Lake area. I think the money, which I, how much money is being spent on this third?
We don't know, it's not our, it's not county money, so we don't know.
Okay, does somebody know?
It's funded by grants.
Grants, okay, how much money are we?
We have no money in hand. No money in hand at the moment. The landowners themselves are seeking to do work on their own dime initially while we seek funding.
We got a little tiny bit of seed money from the nature conservancy and that was to fund my time to help work on permitting, to get the permit process started because it's so lengthy and also to go and apply for other funding sources. We did get some from the Business Oregon Tide Gate Grant and Loan Program, but that is expiring in June. And the reason why I have had trouble, because I've applied to the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board and other, even federal funding sources, the reason why we have not been able to get funding for this project is because the funding agencies view this as an agricultural project. They're saying this is more about irrigation, cleaning out ditches, watering systems for cattle. Yes, it is definitely going to have benefits for Fish and Wildlife, but they feel like it's not enough for the financial investment. They feel like this is more about supporting the agricultural operations. I disagree and we're continuing on that pathway. This is about the permit.
Right, well, what I see right now, the whole Co-Kill Valley drive in here, you know, you look over, it's two feet over, you know, water. There's fish in there right now, they're doing well.
The point is, is that without a permit, nobody's gonna commit to funding because you've got no authority to do what you want to do. And so, you know, the funding part of it, once we get it properly permitted, then we can proceed with that. And that will be a combination of landowners' contributions, individual landowners' contributions, the, and other sources of funding.
Well, again, you know, I mentioned the cart before the horses, that you're doing all this so that salmon smoke can come in there and feed, do their thing and then some of that's later on they disperse and get out of there before they get lamped and locked and die.
From the drainage district standpoint, for our agricultural landowners, our focus is on getting this done for the benefit of the ag operation. And the way this works is, is the way that the Winter Lake area is, it's called Winter Lake for a reason, as you noticed when you came in today, is that it's underwater in wintertime. We can't put cows out there in the wintertime. But what has made this project viable is, is that we can manage this so in the wintertime we can allow the fish to have access. And quite frankly, that's what brought the funding to be able to do the tide gate project at the river to begin with, is that... Is, is that, uh, is the fact that the fish community was able to bring, bring that funding to it. What I can tell you is that without the tide gate system to be able to control water in a non-storm situation, on average, all that ground out there would be under 6.3 feet of water, 6.8 feet of water on the average, uh, all the time. And that's four, that's, uh, 3.7 feet above the field level. So if you take that and look at the whole estuary and the number of failing tide gates and everything else, if you have all of that failure and can't keep up with these tide gates, then, then, then you're gonna, you think you got mosquitoes now. Wait until you get the high tides coming in on every piece, uh, up through the whole thing and it's gonna pool up and go from there, uh, exponential comes into that conversation.
Well, I did my homework on, and back in the 1800s or that area before, you know, we had diking and latheries and there was a major malaria outbreak back in the 1800s and a lot of the populations, the Native Americans were decimated. They, like, three quarters of their tribe were killed from it. And a lot, I, I saw grave sites up on some of my relatives' land from the settlers back in those days. You know, died, you know, and fat.
Yeah, the sailing ships, if you look up the British Civil Society on mosquitoes, you'll find in the 17 and 1800s, sailing ships brought malaria, which wiped out probably 97% of the coastal tribes and about the same in the Willamette tribes.
So I was correct, I did my homework, right, okay. Anyway, I, I, I feel like, you know, I, I still haven't got a, a, a number. Uh, can we, can we get an estimate of this, for, um, phase is gonna cost? Is it gonna be, is it gonna be under five million? Is it gonna be over?
Probably around five.
We could get that from Jay. Okay, well, so, being involved at, at this other meeting for the fencing in the county, which has been making progress, but, um, a lot of these culverts and tide gates are under county roads. The county is broke, they need the money. And I, I, I just don't see the money to be spent on helping a, a really certain landowners where, you know, you, you have a main transportation road that, you know, these roads need to be culvert.
Yeah, so, so again, this is, this is not county money we're talking about at all.
Right.
This is, this is grants that are coming from either federal agencies or, you know, some other NGOs. I don't know what the sources are that are being tapped, but there's not one penny of this that's coming from county resources other than the approval process.
Well, there's, there's, yeah, there's state money with the flood relief, you know, that could be spent on, on the roads, that's, that's state.
Well, that, that may be, but that doesn't have anything to do with the, with the phase three Winter Lake.
I think this is simply a land use issue. Yes, does our planning department think this is okay to do or not okay to do? We're not funding it.
Yeah, so, so, and point stipulated, Mark, that there are failing culverts under county roads. No question about that. That's, that's a completely separate issue and none of the grants or monies that are being sourced for, for this project would be applicable to county road culverts or county road maintenance.
Sometimes they can.
Okay, sometimes they could, there could be some crossover. Okay, thank you, Kayla.
Um, in all the videos, I, Mr. Messer's property, I, you know, it's great, you know, get the drainage moving, uh, make, make some of the, uh, main, it's main drainage areas deeper for, you know, enhance the fish. One thing I disagree with ODFW is they wanna put willow trees everywhere. In my opinion, willow trees turn into bamboo and they, they go everywhere. And for me, a drainage area with, uh, willow is just gonna clog, plug up. It's not gonna drain correctly. I, I, you guys.
There's a little tree for this project.
Are you asking me? Um, we have to be strategic when we're planting willows on channels. So, um, you don't wanna, uh, if it's a very, very narrow channel, willows are probably not the ideal species because you're right, they will eventually, the roots will encroach in the channel. But if it's a wider channel and you suck them back away, um, you know, you probably have a good 25, 30 years before those trees are gonna grow enough to have roots and things encroaching in the channel. And then really it just comes down to doing maintenance. No one is prohibited from trimming their trees. People just generally don't go out and do it, but you can. You're not supposed to remove the entire riparian. But if you need to go do some trimming and clearing, uh, you're, my understanding is you're legally allowed to do that. People just don't.
With an excavator and just kinda?
Well, preferably not with an excavator, but like a chainsaw or something.
Well, I mean, to keep the, the channel, you know.
You can clean your ditches legally with the proper permitting pathway.
Okay, and that permitting requires, um, again, going through you guys, ODFW, uh, you're, you're...
You don't have to go through us, but we do help people through the process.
Yeah, to get a permit is, nobody here in the group at this table permits spill removal, uh, excavating a stream, uh, oilfish passage with ODFW, usually regulatory authorities, the folks at the table. Kayla, I help people get money. If you have a willow that's falling in a stream, you can cut it with a chainsaw, gently pick it out of the stream. But like she said, you can't dig and remove the root structure under any county riparian ordinance or the Oregon Department of Agriculture riparian ordinance. But you certainly can facilitate flow. And if you've got some problem, we'll, we'll certainly come on site. We can figure out how to tax those and get flow back, that's not a problem, so.
Well, I, I guess common sense is, you know, the county commissioners, you, you need money for the roadways and that would be awesome. And I, I just see millions, you know, here, it's like, it's like, here, here's, here's mine. It's like not treated very responsibly. It's just, in my opinion, it could be spent for you guys, whether in state, federal, they... Come in, come together. I mean, you guys can work with commissioners, can't you, with the county and...
I think what I'm hearing is maybe you, the lack of clarification of the funding pathways for these types of projects. So to try to make it really short and succinct is, we were, like I was saying in my little slide, we work on a voluntary basis. So first a landowner has to come to me and say, hey, I got a problem, like a culvert or a tide gate, can you help me? And then, uh, we will go out, we'll, we'll assess it. We'll eventually, if we can work in agreement with that landowner on a, a project that I feel is going to be able to qualify for funding and that's also gonna meet his needs for his farming operation and drainage, then we proceed to the next step, which is applying for funding. And, but that can take a long time, it can take a year or two. And then once we get that funding, when it's public money, as in, you know, coming from a state, a federal or a nonprofit funding entity, we have to do everything very by the book. So we have to do cultural resource surveys, we have to do all the permit application, we do a ton of consultations with all the agencies. So none of the, of the money is actually coming from county tax dollars. Now, if, if the county, so in some cases, I am working on projects that do involve county infrastructure and then I coordinate typically with the roadmaster on those. And in some cases, every grant has different rules, but in some funding sources, they can be used to repair or improve public infrastructure. And we're doing that in a, a spot in the Kooz Basin. So that does happen and the county can work with watershed councils and districts in the same way sometimes that a private landowner can. It's just really on a project by project basis.
Well, the, the three streams that I mentioned, Seven Mile, Perry Creek, Lampa, these, I mean, as a kid, I, I remember back in the day, there was tons of, uh, actually fish, you know, perrywinkles, the lamp, you know, there were abundant. There was crawfish out there. It is now literally covered. I mean, you guys witnessed it. It's, it's choked up, it's, 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 it could be a salmon heron stream.
Mr. Chair.
So.
I think we were...
Well, real quick, if I could, you guys could get me and my neighbor.
I wrote business cards.
Okay, I, I called you a couple times, I never, never, nobody answered.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you very much. All right, Charlie?
I'll be sure.
You better be.
I know where you live, Charlie.
If you're not John Wilton. Fellow that's been around the area there over 50 years, Charlie Waterman Landon. We own property that the Bridges Foundation owns now and it's in the process of getting it over to Fish and Water, which is the third landowner in the area that's being converted to phase three. How many of you have driven down the North Bank Road here and looked to the right, to the north, and seen all the waterways and the dead wells? You guys all seen that?
Sure, yes.
Okay, I believe that it's a fear of the landowners that this area's gonna look like that. What, that was in Kaligo Drainage District's, um, area to monitor and manage. We, there were five beaver dams starting to dam it up that actually created enough water to kill the, the willows. We asked to have them cleaned out the ditch. It has, we have legal status through the Drainage District to do that. The feds came in and said, no. So we had to leave the dams there, which dammed it up, makes a nice mosquito habitat. So I think people are thinking that this area is, and Fish and Water Light own that today, feel that this area's gonna start looking like that. They, Fish and Water Light own the phase two and they feel that that's been, extra water in, many mosquito habitat. The beavers will come in and probably dam these things, these drainages up and create habitat that they have no control over, holding the beavers out. So I think people are worried that this phase three, which has, Bridges Foundation has about 500 and so acres there, about a third of it that is in, being transferred to Fish and Water Light main field, maybe that this is gonna end up, end up, so, well, that's my perspective.
Thank you.
You were a landowner out there for a long time.
Yes, I own the Bridges Foundation.
Yeah, where they have now. What, in the late summer, what was the groundwater level? You ever dig down, find out?
Yeah, it's about six inches down. We have, uh, it's only six inches down.
Well, we heard earlier that it was irrigation is inefficient, you don't need that to irrigate there.
I did not, we had water gates then and I let mine close because canary grass, which is our major orange out there, roots go down three feet. I mean, they pull plenty of water and they go, mine, I kept mine closed. And, uh, I'm, I'm, alone, I'm, alone, um, excuse me, an operator bought my place afterwards, did flood it and he got about the same reduction as I did. So it, uh, didn't seem to make much difference.
So I saw the flooding this past summer on the southern end, below the unit two. And the cows are out there and their bellies are higher in a lot of areas when they somehow left the tide gate over or something. I don't know what happened, but it was a huge, big bunch of water running there. And I don't know if that created mosquitoes or not.
Right, they're raising pockets.
We weren't allowed, we, county health department wasn't allowed to go out there.
It takes a while, it takes, you know, several tides, high tides to get the water out to the ranches now. Then it will take a ton, a lot of time to get it back. And there's that time in there in between. Fred's trying to alleviate that, okay?
Okay, very good.
So I guess for staff, this is a work session, but the property question is the Bridges Foundation property or no, or the whole area?
Bridges Foundation is on landowner, on, on the property project area.
Bridges Foundation, the 581.
So Beaver, slew.
Staff report, did you guys not get it?
Yeah.
So on the front of it, it says applicants. Um, the property owners are gonna be Mesherly, um, Henson, Eisenhardt. I believe ODFW is one of the property owners. And then Fitzpatrick, which is Bridges, so that, which is Bridges, Fitzpatrick is Bridges.
So which property is involved?
All of those, all of those are involved.
So for, we got a question here, it's bothering me, heck, I mean, although I don't agree with Stuart's rule of common conduct, the ducks will love your marsh or your frog pond, as they call it. Because I've been, I've hunted ducks for years and years and years and years. Even last Wednesday, went for a north and look out there and the water receded below the fields, there's smooth fields, et cetera. The ducks were all concentrated where the grass and food was. They weren't, there were very few, I would say none, but very few ducks out there in your frog pond. Which, I've been watching this for several years now and going, oh, wait a second. The ducks know where to feed because they're, they're going where they can feed on in that area. But I have another question for Cokeville Watership. I have a report here, it says lower Cokeville Tide Gate Fish Passage Monitoring Year One and Year Two. On page 23 of the Year One study, and it had sampling events for mainstream, Cochrane, Seastream, which is downriver, I guess. They have Beaver Creek. And they said, they caught Coho, 554 in the mainstream, 502 in Cochrane, 570 in Seastream, 1045 in Beaver Creek, which is the north of these three units, I assume, right? And then you go over to Unit One, which is on the north end, and you got the frog pond, Unit Two, as I call it, and Unit Three. And so they did 11 sampling events in Beaver Creek and they got 1,005 Coho. And they tagged 428, okay? They didn't do any sampling in Unit One and did six, sent, uh, six times, they sampled in Unit Three and they found one Coho and one tag, I assume that's the same fish. Anyway, on Unit Two, they sampled 19 times. They found 67 Coho, tagged 62, and they found 41 Chinook. But yet here in the middle of this whole layout, it said Beaver Creek transferred to Unit Two. It had four events where they transferred 137 tagged fish to Unit Two. And that was in 2021. In 2122, they transfer, they transferred 287 Coho to Unit Two and 255 were tagged. And when they got done sampling Unit Two six times, they found two. And then I read here, it says, um, there was an explanation. Weirdly, Unit Two had highest number of non-navy fish species. 1,051 bullheads, 3,287 bluegills, 283 perch and 269 large round bass and a whole bunch of other stuff, including a six lamped. So I was led to believe, and I've been here a while, that this whole Unit Two was supposed to be for Coho restorationery. It appears to me, I'm no scientist, but it looks like they salted the mine.
So the issue there is the difference in sampling inefficiencies. At all of our other sites, we have channels where water is only in the channel and there's banks on both sides. So the fish are confined to the channel. They can't go up, out of the channel, onto the pasture.
But why did they transfer to Unit Two?
At Winter Lake, Unit Two, those channels were underwater and we were standing on the shore, the bank of the channel, waist deep in water. And so our sampling, uh, strategy is to use hoop nets. And there's three... And so, our sampling, uh, strategy is to use hoop nets, and there's three to four feet of water over those hoop nets in Winter Lake, Unit Two.
Well, tell me who transferred the fish from Beaver Creek to Unit Two? Who transferred?
Because the water is so deep.
You're not answering.
I'm finishing my explanation for why we have the difference in sampling inefficiencies.
Coquille Watershed did the transfer, or did ODFNW?
Both. Both. And so, because we were not able to capture Coho in Winter Lake, Unit Two, even though we saw plenty of surface feeding all over Unit Two, capturing Coho in Unit Two is very difficult. And for the monitoring purposes, we wanted to know how long Coho stay in these different sites, and if there's a difference based on size. And so, we would take Coho from Beaver Creek and transfer them to Unit Two, and that was done mainly by ODFNW.
Captured and tagged?
Captured and tagged, yes, thank you.
So that you can track them?
So that we could track them.
Yeah, each unit has a pit tagging monitoring, so if you're released upstream of the tide gate, and when you exit, we can tell when you exit and how long you stayed in there. And despite observing a lot of fish feeding in Unit Two, in the winter, only Coho are surface feeding, as it's called, and the other species like bass and croc, they're very lethargic because they're more dormant, so, so, you know, they can see a lot of fish feeding in Unit Two, Unit Two is lower in elevation, it averages at the lowest point, there's seventy acres of elevation too, that's what that means, is in the winter, the water's deeper, and it's very hard to.
It's between five and six feet.
And so, we transfer tagged fish so that we could figure out their residence time from an area where they're more able to be cornered, and trapping is much more efficient.
So, you sampled Unit Two nineteen times in twenty twenty-one, and they said it's really difficult to do that. Why would you take and put the fish in there before you sampled to see if there was any in there in the first place?
Well, they're all tagged, once you put them in.
I got that, but what about not doing that and finding out what's actually in there? As I was told by you guys, that this was going to be Coho habitat, they would just go in there all by themselves, have a wonderful time in it.
They do, and so, if you look at how many fish are detected entering the site, you will see that there are a lot of fish entering both Unit One, Unit Two, and Unit Three, but it was difficult to capture them.
Well, you have almost all of them are tagged.
No, not all the Coho.
Sixty-seven versus sixty-two.
That's how many we tagged from the ones that we captured in our hands.
Looks like Mr. Gray would like to speak to this question.
I'm not buying all this, if you could tell.
Thank you. Commissioners, the, the movement of fish was tagged fish, and that has nothing to do with estimating how many fish are out in Winter Lake or Beaver Slough. We know that we can capture fish in Beaver Slough very effectively, because those, those fish are in channels. Once the water is out into Winter Lake, it's like a football field, and trying to go find, I don't know, an insect or something that's out on a football field. So, we very soon realized that those traps, those hoop traps that we were putting in Winter Lake, were not gonna be as efficient as putting the traps over in Beaver Slough. But, as a secondary objective that we had, we wanna know what fish do, where do they move around, how long do they stay into certain areas? So, the number of fish transferred over from Beaver Slough, those were tagged fish so that we could see what movement happens into and out of Winter Lake, into and out of Beaver Slough, and as that map and those big red arrows showed, we wanted to find out what those fish do. So, transferring fish is not so we can say, oh, there's a lot of fish in Winter Lake. Transferring the fish was for movement and residence time, that's what we were looking to accomplish.
We need a whole much more data than just putting this out, because at least people think you salted the mine on this thing.
We have, we have a much lower efficiency of trapping in Winter Lake.
For the nineteen instances, how many were done before you introduced Beaver Creek Coho into it? Because it appears like sixty-two of the sixty-seven fish that were caught in Unit Two were already tagged.
They were not already tagged, they were tagged after they were captured. So, it's, uh, fish that are too small or unhealthy are not tagged.
But that's confusing when you say you transferred a hundred and thirty-seven tagged fish to Unit Two for Beaver Creek.
So, those fish would not, also, they would not confound any kind of numbers that we would get in Winter Lake, because if we catch them again, we detect the tag, and we would say, oh, yeah, those were fish that we transferred. So, once they've been.
Does a pit tag have a unique identifier?
Yes, individual fish. And so, you can detect every fish, and where it came from, when it was caught and tagged.
But there needs to be more data, because when you read this, it'll look good to me. It looks like they're trying to prove that it was highly successful in having this muted tidal regulator there for Unit Two, as well as One and Three, and if you know anything about the muted tidal regulators, which you do, it only lets out the high water, and when the water gets too low, it lets in water. And if that's the case, then you've got this nice warm, warm frog pond, which has got all these invasive species in it.
Yeah, we, those fish, those fish were in, in the Coquille Basin, in the Coquille Valley, everywhere. Doesn't, not just out here in Winter Lake, they are everywhere. So, they have the ability to get in there, and after we created Unit Two restoration channels, there's tide gates, they got in there. We didn't salt anything, they got in there.
Commissioner.
But we know, over time, over time, we've, we've shaded the channels in Unit Two, we have a better flushing activity by the, by the factor of the new tide gate, um, structure, and over time, that, those channels, the water quality in those channels is better, and it'll get better. What we hope to do is to favor cold-water native fish species, I'm not saying that we're ever gonna get rid of the warm-water fish, but, but our intent over time is to make that habitat better for the native species.
So, was it your data temps tell you over a period from December to May?
I'm not talking about a year's time, I'm talking about that taking time, I mean.
When you get over about seventy, what, eight degrees, you get a warm-water fish rate. So, I'm wondering what your data sensors told you, that are located out there, what temps were over that period of time? I don't see that in this report.
There's a, there's a difference.
But that'll do way to call Coho.
There's temperature data in that report. There's temperature data in that report. I can't tell you off the top of my head what that temperature is.
Yeah, but that, when it gets to a certain temperature, Coho won't exist anymore.
Yeah, so, so Commissioner, in addition, if you'd further, and I could, could spend some time and have coffee with you, in the report, we also talk about seven hundred fish that we tagged upriver, and part of the analysis of how many fish are in Unit Two is not based on these transfers from Beaver Slough, they, they can't be used to determine how many fish are in there, those are just growth and how long they stay. Seven hundred fish are tagged up at Merle Point, then released up there, they then enter through the electronic system under recorded, and that's part of the data that shows how many do enter Unit Two, Unit One, and Unit Three, and if, and we could sit down, Julie and I, you and Coffee, and talk, further on in the report talks about that part of those fish that were tagged, and they do reflect, if we release a thousand fish, for example, at Merle Point, and two hundred of them go into Units One, Two, and Three, then that suggests the percentage of fish coming up river go into those individual habitats, so that's in there as well. There's another year of data in this year's report.
I don't see that, because you got a hundred and thirty-seven goes in, and you only painted sixty-seven, so I'm going, huh?
Well, recapture is a difficult, it's like trying to catch two ocean in the, two separate, the Pacific Ocean, once they're in there, because that unit is low, and it becomes a much bigger lake, and the tactics we use with hoop traps is really most effective in channels versus a wide-open area. So, we all, we put them in, you see all, and they stay, the only way we've been getting at how many are in there is the ones we release upriver at Merle Point and tag at Oakburn Park, and we see them pop in and come through, the tagged reader, and she gets data every day, she gets an email, shows how many were detected, and those are the fish that can tell us, out of the percentage of fish we had tagged upstream, how many went to Seastream, how many went to the other tide gate project channel, the lower CO, how many went into Kalito, and that's in this report, and it's further expanded on in this year's, which is Year Three, and I'd be more than willing to spend time with you and Julie and talk through that a little bit more, because I, I understand your perspective that, well, you wanna say Unit Two works, so you just dump some fish in, and that would be incorrect, unethical science, and those fish that are dumped in.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, absolutely, makes total sense that you would, you would see it that way, but there's another whole section in the report talks about fish that came from upper river tagged, and those are the ones we're basing on entries into this unit, so.
Stuart's jumping up and down.
To your, to your temperature question as well, the time, the time of the life cycle of the Coho that they use, is they come down in December, as, December through the winter, as river flows are starting to rise, they're looking for a place to get out of that main river. As I, as I talked about before, the velocity in the main river, the turbidity where they can't feed is, is not conducive to them, so they wanna get out into these slow, slow-water areas. So, so they start coming in there in December, through the winter, and by the time we see about, what, April, May?
Mm-hmm, yes.
By April, they're leaving. We, we see that through the radio, through the pit tagging that's done, and through those antenna arrays that are at the, at the tide gates. So, we detect those when they're leaving and going out. So, they're, they're in Winter Lake, and they're in these other restoration areas. They're in there at a time of year when those warm-water fish are pretty dormant, they're not, they're not feeding much.
Now, there's an old tide gate, I think, of Beaver Creek, right?
Yeah, and it's leaking badly, and it helps with that huge leak to let fish through there, so.
So, we've got exponentially more fish of Beaver Creek, did you were able to count?
They're easier to catch.
And they're easier to catch because they're in a channel, they're not spread out through big, big river lake.
Channels running through the Unit Two.
So, the other issue.
But they're underwater.
Is that velocities prevent us from sampling in the larger channels, uh, higher velocities will kill the juvenile Coho in those traps, and because the Beaver Creek tide gate is not functioning properly, there is much lower velocities in the Beaver Creek channels, so we can trap in channels much larger than what we can trap at local.
Beaver Creek goes through the swamp and all that stuff, and slows it down.
Yeah, but we're.
I realize that, and the problem is, before, before dykes, fish used to go all the process, everywhere out in the valley, and now that you got dykes, that doesn't happen. Anyway, we, we'll have to have an additional chat.
Let's do it.
As I read this one, ah.
I think that's an excellent question that we should be able to answer. Mr. Chair, I will, we have, you start first. Yeah, I was just gonna say, we've, we've spent a considerable amount of time on the tangential issues of mosquitoes and salmon, which are significant and important, but I think for the purposes that, that this work session actually was for, I think we fulfilled the informational requirement for everybody. So, if nobody else has something immediately, urgently pressing to say regarding the actual purpose of this work session, I will call us now adjourned, thank you.
No, no, no.
Oh, yeah.
I think the purpose of this meeting was to.
Chair, make a motion, we have a public hearing, since it was so much from everywhere, people wanting to comment, rather than just going back to the planning commission.
So, just to be clear, so the options are, you can, you can call this particular matter up to the board level, and, and the board would decide the application, or you could allow it to take normal course, which is to run through planning and have planning directors do the application.
You know, in, my preference would be, for, to get into motions, that we do this as we normally would do it, run it, pass the planning commission, they make a decision, if that's appealed, then we hear it.
Planning director.
Planning, planning director.
Pardon me?
Planning director.
Playing, yeah, you go through the planning, the planning director, it's the first step in the process, if there's appeal, then it comes, and appeal, then it comes to us.
What, what do you think is the likelihood the planning director would make a decision that would force an appeal to the board?
You know, I don't know, but I, I think we ought to let that, let nature take its course, and, and do it the way we always do it. And so, I, I would move that we let the matter be heard first, before the planning director, and then if there's a need for an appeal, we would, we would hear it, hear it at the board commissioners' level.
So, there is, there is one motion that dies for lack of a second.
You have a different motion? Yeah, it comes back to us, and we have more participation, and everybody wants to have their two cents for it.
Well, I have a motion in there somewhere.
You did, but it died for lack of a second.
Okay, that, I thought you talked about Bob's first motion that died.
He never actually got that finished.
And I got it done before you jumped in there.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, boy, it hurts my feelings, and my motion died.
All right, oh, sorry. Don't be, don't be emotional about it.
I'll try not to.
All right, I'll, I'll second your motion, and.
Recite it again, please.
The motion, the motion is to have the continuation of this in a public meeting to afford a greater opportunity for public input through the project.
Which week should we, which week should we decide?
I think, also, are we in discussion period now?
I'm interrupting now, mainly.
We, we have a motion, and a second, we are in discussion, yes.
So, the planning director made extra copies of the entire application for anybody out there that wants to read it, or put it online.
It is online.
Yeah, but they don't know that, I mean, to put it out to folks, all the people who signed up here and all that stuff, so they're well-informed of what this project is all about, because we heard a lot of different stuff that some of it didn't pertain, and some did.
May I have your say? Yeah.
Okay.
So, one, one, one thing, because this is under a timeline, meaning you can't go past the hundred and fifty days, I would like a commitment on a hearing date, because we will have to send notice.
Okay. We have, we have budget work sessions all through next week, the first thing that I see would be probably on Monday, the eighteenth.
Okay, I have to have a twenty-one day period to mail the notice, or twenty-day period?
Two, three, okay.
So, you're looking at the first of April.
Uh, okay, or maybe even less than that, I mean, we could go, we could go March twenty-eighth, March twenty-ninth?
Yeah, you could.
Or twenty-seventh?
Uh, no, twenty-seventh, I'm out of the office.
I think that's too soon, I'd rather you did the twentieth or the twenty-ninth.
Okay, let's, let's, let's put this up for the twenty-eighth.
One thirty?
Yeah, one thirty, same bat time.
Okay. March?
Yeah, March twenty-eighth at one thirty PM.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, so, with that discussion made, I will call the vote, all in favor, all right?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Now, we're adjourned, thank you all.
Wow.
Thank you.